All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 7:11 PM and I'd like to call the February regular meeting of the Narberth Planning Commission to order. First of all, I apologize. There was a problem with the agenda, so I know some of you have figured out a workaround. If you have a way to email me at narberthplanningcommission@gmail.com, I will email you the correct link while we are sitting here. I'd like to note that in person tonight are Dave Brier, Adam Crabb, Judge Jajuski Hyon, Jim Spear, Chloe Moore from the Planning Commission, and we have Heidi Boys and Jim Cornwell, Planning Commissioner, joining us by Zoom. Borough Manager Samantha Bryant, Borough zoning officer Kevin Walsh, and Borough Council member Michelle Pennanopoulos are joining us by Zoom and by my count, we have one, two, three members of the public attending by Zoom as well. So has everyone received tonight's agenda? Okay, so tonight's agenda are brief announcements, old business, which involves the draft, solid ordinance discussion, and discussion of various zoning amendments. Under new business, I would like to add to the agenda a discussion about station circle and potential work we might assist the borough and council with on station circle. And I'd like to move that to the second order of business after announcements and updates, since Borough Manager Bryant and Councilmember Pennanopoulos are here to be part of that conversation. With our respect for their time, I'd like to be able to handle that first. Is that okay with everyone? Can we move the agenda outright? Okay. And then, as always, at the end of the meeting, we will have public comment. To begin with, item one, Chair's Update. I don't really have much to report. I do have a request. The Penn Valley Civic Association has begun some sort of conversation or process about thinking about Montgomery Avenue, future Montgomery Avenue. Some of you, I believe, have attended some of those conversations or meetings. And Council President has asked if the Planning Commission could appoint one person from the Commission to regularly attend those meetings and report back to us on what is going on. Apparently, Councilmember Bob Voiceboard will be doing that on behalf of Borough Council, listening on those meetings. And so I'd like to know if anyone from the Planning Commission would be interested. I don't know what the scope of these meetings are or the agenda. Jim, it looks like you've been to some of those. Can you describe to us what's going on?
So far, it's a discussion. There's been one meeting aware of it, discussion about desired features, about how Montgomery might evolve or do a more pedestrian-friendly area to more commercially-friendly area than it is now. And how, well, getting into how Lower Marion and Narberth might cooperate to make that happen.
And is this being facilitated by the Penn Valley Civic, or is Lower Marion Township leading this?
Penn Valley Civic driven it. It's a neighbor, a couple of neighbors on Penn Valley side who are wheel-driving it through the Penn Valley Civic Association. I think Christina is actually here. Christina?
Christina Cheg.
I think I saw her. Is she here? Yeah.
I believe she is. Hello, Christina.
Hi, everyone. I didn't know whether you wanted me to say anything, since you guys were talking about this topic, Jim.
Can you just hold on a second about that?
Sure.
Would other members of the Commission like to spend a few minutes hearing more about this process at this point? Would be okay if we? Okay. Christina, this is a part of the agenda where we just sort of have informational items, but we are glad that you're here and would be appreciative if you could give us a brief description of what you are working on.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. I'm a Penn Valley resident. I'm part of the Penn Valley Civic Association. And, you know, we recently just started a discussion, because the area of Montgomery Avenue that we're focusing on is between Old Gulf Road, where the Wawa is, all the way down to Havafurd, where Green Drop is. So this area on both sides, you know, crosses Penn Valley, Narberth, and even Marion. You know, there's a lot of vacancies along this area. There's potential for development in some spots. We would love for it to be more pedestrian-friendly, more trees, more native plantings, businesses to come in that would thrive in the area. And so it's a very ambitious goal. And the last meeting that we had, which was actually our first big meeting, it was a civic meeting. It wasn't a separate business district-focused meeting. And we had Dan Bernheim, who's our Ward Leader, as well as Chris Lesswing, who leads Lower Marion Township, I think, business development or business planning. And so they weren't aware of the Narberth strategic plan for this area that was conducted maybe 15 years ago. But Chris said that the Penn Valley Business District could be next in the Lower Marion Township's plan. Like, right now, they're focused on Ardmore and Burnmore, I believe, but in 12 to 18 months, he believes Lower Marion Township will have more time, more capacity to focus on this area. And I certainly shared with him what some folks in the Narberth Borough shared with me, which was the plan that was done 15 years ago. There's a lot of great information in there that is still relevant and aligned with what we want to accomplish.
So what do you plan to be working on over the next 12 to 18 months while Lower Marion Township determines whether they have resources to do more work here?
Right. So, you know, Chris Lesswing suggested that there can absolutely be grassroots, bottoms-up events. We could, we are, I am starting to speak with some of the business owners, such as Matt Berger. You guys, some of you guys might know him. He does work in Narberth as well. He's a business developer. And, you know, he owns the courthouse. And that space behind the courthouse in Staples is interesting. And so we might try to hold some community events there. We're still trying to get permission. We don't know if it's permission from Staples, from the courthouse, or permission from the landlords to maybe do something this spring. And so we also spoke to some of the other business owners along the area. Some of them are owners, some of them are just like tenants, leasehold owners. And so there are some folks who want to certainly beautify the area and make it more cohesive, but there isn't, there isn't yet like a business, what's the word? Like a business-led organization that would be able to fund some of this enhancement. You know, there's just, while there are businesses along this area, there are, I don't know enough businesses that are thriving to be able to contribute financially in a meaningful manner. But in speaking to a couple of the developers, they said that they would, certainly if we specified what our goal was, how we would be using the money, they said that they would be willing to contribute some funding to make some incremental improvements before the township can invest more of their time.
If we were interested in following the progress of this, how would we do that?
You can always reach out to me. We don't have, at the moment, because we're still really early in the process, we don't really have regular meetings. We do have a Penn Valley Civic meeting coming up this Thursday, but it's not going to be heavily focused on the business district. We might talk about it briefly. So there's always probably going to be a little bit of an agenda item on the Penn Valley Civic meetings, but outside of that, you know, Jim's part of the Facebook group, Michelle's part of the Facebook group that we have, where we're so far, you know, it's just very informal in the moment, in terms of the conversations we're having, discussions with Lower Marion Township and the business owners.
So any other questions about this? Jim, would you mind just monitoring that for us?
Me?
Sounds like you are already, right? What a pleasure.
Yes.
You're in the Facebook group, right? Okay. We'll ask Jim Spear to keep in touch about how things progress. And I think if you ever are moving towards something actionable, whether it's an event or a process, we'd be happy to have you here to talk about what you're working on and learn more about how we can support your work.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right. So any other questions about this? Any other comments, Jim? Does it sound good to you? You're okay? All right, well, thank you very much. It was a pleasure meeting you, and hopefully one day we'll meet you on Montgomery Avenue somewhere.
Yes.
All right. That is all I have by way of Chair's Update. I don't have any other matters to report. So next, we will move to approval of minutes. Adam pointed out to me that we actually technically need to approve not only the January minutes, but also the December, November minutes. Last month, we were not meeting properly in public, and so we couldn't really take that action. So first, I'd like to ask, since we already reviewed the December, November minutes and agreed that they were good for posting in a preliminary way, could I have a motion to formally approve the December and November minutes?
So moved.
As presented last time. Moved by Dave, any second? Any second thoughts about that? Further comments upon reading them in detail on the Internet? Okay. All in favor of approving the December and November minutes as presented? I see Jim, Jim Cornwell, and Heidi, so it's a union of the stuff. Okay. In regard to the January minutes, I would first like to extend my appreciation to Adam for compiling those minutes and presenting them to us. It occurs to me now that one of the other things we deferred was electing officers, but since we didn't put them on the agenda, we will wait until next, next month to do that. But Adam has agreed to put his name and nomination as Secretary and has already begun counseling the minutes. So I appreciate that very, very much. So I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the January minutes as presented to us.
So moved.
Second? Okay. Is there any comments, questions?
Yeah. I'd like to make a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
So there are a couple of lines in here that just aren't clear, and I thought maybe we should clarify. I don't know, you know, I think it might be helpful if someone were to try to go back to the minutes and figure out what transpired at our meeting. And so one of them has to do with, on page four at the top, the slope requirements, it says, "The slope requirements should set to the code controls for twin houses." And I guess it was just the way it was worded, and I was wondering if it could say that in a way that was clear about what we're talking about. Specifically, that the twin house roof slope per code is currently the same as other single-family types, but examples in the, in the borough of flatter roofs exist. I mean, it's something that we need to discuss, and I, I thought that that should be in there. Otherwise, I'm not sure what it's saying, because it was brought up as another issue.
Heidi, can you point out again where that is? I'm having a little trouble finding it.
On the top of page four.
It's in my copy. It's like it's towards the.
Oh, that's right. Okay. It's above building coverage limits for lots.
Roof slope and height for cottages and twins.
Roof slope and height, yep. And height for cottages and twins. The third, third statement, "The slope requirements should set to the code controls for twin houses." I'm just not sure what that's saying.
Okay.
It could be reworded, but also I wanted to add that twin house roof slope per code is the same as other single-family types. And then I had brought up that we should consider other roof slopes, flatter roof slopes for twins as they exist in the borough. So that's just one comment I had.
Okay.
And then on cottage sizes, I thought we should say something about, the next line after cottage sizes, "Most cottages in Narberth are under 2,000 square feet, so it makes sense as a limit." Well, that hasn't been decided. We need to discuss that. So it makes it sound like it's sort of indefinite what's that saying, but I think it needs to be said to, you know, to be discussed further.
Adam, is that your recollection? You, you listened to the tape, right? Or do we just need to go back and check that?
I mean, these are just, they're capsule summaries, so, you know, the detailed discussion may not fit with the capsule, but it's, I don't know that we, this draws any conclusions about the, I mean, my sense of the discussion was that we talked about this number 2,000, and it was said that the exercise produced, you know, the smallest lot can get to close to 2,000, and that there wasn't much evidence of cottages in the town larger than 2,000. And that was pretty much the gist of, that's my recollection of the discussion. But if we could look at the tape.
Yeah, I only want, I just, you know, again, I think it's just for the sense of clarity about what we actually discussed. It's, I agree that having bullet points is good, but I don't want to have misleading bullet points.
Well, just if you, what would you like? What do you think it should say?
I think it just says that cottage size, you know, is something to be discussed further.
So should, should we strike the phrase, "So it makes sense as a limit"?
Yeah.
This of the committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, but it was said that most cottages are under 2,000 square feet, and that we think that we can get something close to 1,800 to 1,900 square feet on most lots.
Well, I mean, I think it's, I hate to keep harping on this, but technically, we don't have a cottage type in Narberth yet. So even to say that most cottages are under 2,000 square feet, I don't think we've decided what the cottage, we haven't defined a cottage type yet. I mean, you could, you should, it really should just say cottages are being considered as a new building type. Many houses in Narberth are under 2,000 square feet to contribute to the argument for having a new building type, something along that line. It's just, it's misleading, and it doesn't fit within our existing language in the code.
I'll agree that we probably have not had as rich a discussion on this as we could have. It was stated that most, I think it was literally stated that most cottages were under 2,000 square feet. Doesn't say, I mean, that statement on its face doesn't say much, because, I mean, in my opinion, most cottages are also under 50, you know, or 1,000. So by definition, they're under 2,000 square feet. I just, I don't think we've dived into those details.
I think Heidi's point was, the use of the word cottage is confusing.
Yeah.
Because it's, because it references in a new housing type, which doesn't exist yet, but it's really talking about the existing stock.
Yeah, which is easy to fix. I think the main issue is, did we or did we not agree that 2,000 square feet makes sense as a limit for cottages? That's the real issue. I mean, we could change the way cottages are described quite easily. So the process I was leading this meeting was to go over this point by point to try to arrive at a consensus. My recollection is we arrived at a consensus that 2,000 square feet made sense as a limit. So I guess that's, that's the question for everyone else. Does everyone else remember that, as a consensus, that 2,000 square feet made sense as a limit? This whole point of this exercise in the last meeting was to tackle the outstanding items and see what we could come up with a consensus for. That's, that was, if you read the rest of the minutes, that's, that's the way it's, you know, the way the conversation, conversation went. So Heidi, as a recollection, that still needs discussion, but I'm curious what other people remember of that discussion.
I would suggest that this issue just needs a little wordsmithing. I agree we came to that conclusion, but I agree with Heidi's point that we can't refer to cottages that don't yet exist in the, as a building type. So we just need to polish the grammar a little bit, polish the dictionary a little bit.
True.
I think it's also, you know, is it a recollection of what we said, or is it what we wish we had said? If we said cottages, I was just transcribing what you all said, basically, so I'm good again. So if you want to phrase it, "Most dwelling units in, you know, most, most houses in Narberth are under 2,000 square feet," then if you don't want to use the word cottages.
Well, the minutes, the minutes should reflect the essence of what, what transpired. Whether the, whether the transcripted language conveys that is sometimes not the case. So the essence of what we said was that, thinking about a cottage in the future, it should have a limit, and that limit should be, should be 2,000 square feet. And I think we had that, we had that consensus opinion. But we just have to be careful how we record that.
Jim, do you have any, what is your recollection, Jim? Do you have a different recollection, or?
I guess, apart from the 2,000, the terminology of the cottages as a type and coming up with numbers to represent the types, I cannot say with any certainty exactly what, you know, any final idea about that. But I agree with Heidi that perhaps just for sake of record, we should give it clarity and let it say what it needs, let it represent, you know, its intention.
So how about, the Narberth Planning Commission discussed the potential size limit for cottages as a new building type. Most dwellings in Narberth are under 2,000 square feet. I don't know if that's true, but I think that's what people were saying.
Most houses.
Most houses. And in a site plan exercise performed by Dave Brier, the smallest lot possible in the code can still yield 1,800 to 1,900 square feet dwelling unit or house.
I think that's fair, that's accurate. Right. And I, I feel like, and two of us others, and I think we need to, the purpose of this exercise last month was to go through the recommended code and come to a consensus on different points. If you read the rest of the minutes, that's how it works.
Yes.
We talked about this, we can read on this. And so, and that was how I was trying to lead the meeting. So my recollection is, is that we did arrive at a consensus that 2,000 feet was a reasonable limit. So some of us remember it that way. Heidi remembers it differently. Jim, do you remember if we came to closure on that? Everyone else is, we did, so it's fair to ask you.
That was the only limit we discussed last month. So that was the extent of our discussion. We agreed that the size of the houses we were interested in were under 2,000 square feet.
And I think it was, you were making the argument that it seemed like a reasonable limit, because the evidence pointed that direction. And I don't recall anyone else speaking against that idea. But, not to say that it was concluded, but no one disagreed with that, that I recall.
I believe that's right. Okay. So let's, let's leave it, let's leave it at that and see, see if we can dig into that a little further tonight. I don't want to delay the rest of the agenda. Heidi, do you have any other, other points that you want to raise?
I guess, I was only, the only other one was under parking credits. I wanted to make sure it was clear, the statement, can the parking credits be calculated based on the pre-subdivision or post-subdivision, whichever amount is greater? And I guess, just for clarity, to say something about, you know, for each subdivided lot, based on each lot versus the total of all lots together. I just thought it was, if I was coming into this cold, I wouldn't quite understand what that sentence meant.
Well, pre-subdivision means as an aggregate, and post-subdivision means after the subdivision occurs.
Right. That all the lots together, you know, are handled differently. It's just the way it's worded. I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna.
So how about, can the parking credits be calculated based on the pre-subdivision lots in aggregate or post-subdivision lots in aggregate, whichever amount is greater?
Right. Yeah. Yeah. It's just the way it's worded.
So is that, does that capture it, though? I mean, it's how many parking spaces are the lots before they're subdivided or after they're subdivided?
Right.
I think that's the question, so.
Okay. Yes. Can you, can you look at the whole lot as an aggregate before it's subdivided and calculate the parking credits? Can you look at it after it's subdivided and calculate the parking credits, and then take whichever amount? It's great. That's the question. Just to provide more flexibility. So, and I think the answer was, yes, you could look at it both ways and pick the number that works better for you. So if that can be, the language can be cleared off, that would be fine.
So we, we agree that that proposal is reasonable, is that?
Yeah, right. Okay. I think probably we should postpone the approval of these until we get to looking through the language again.
Just one more comment on these. The, on page four, instead of Presbyterian church, I think you mean Methodist church. Re-rebuild on that.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that was my mishearing it, or?
It's probably my mishearing.
It was one of them.
I often.
Want to find more about that.
It's like that, it could just be mistaken. Yeah, so what we'll do is revise those and let everyone see them before we approve them. I think that's the right thing to do. So we'll just table those minutes. I don't have any other business under announcements and updates, so if it's okay with everyone, I'd like to move on to new business, as we discussed, and invite Borough Manager Bryant, who is somewhere in the Zoom sphere.
Hey, I actually, I apologize, everyone. I mean, it's 7:40 now, and I actually have to, I actually have to head out at this point. I have some other things I have to do tonight. So, I mean, I know we have, you know, a couple other council members here and all that, but unfortunately, I do have some other stuff I have to do tonight, so.
Okay. So, we'll move that along unless, I know, Michelle, is there anything you'd like to say about this or should we just move on and save this till next month? Michelle Pananopoulos. Is Michelle still with us?
She's just turning on her video.
Yeah, I'm here. I don't know why my video won't come on. I was trying to pick a background and now my video doesn't work at all, so don't worry about it, but I'm here. Hi. I don't really have anything that I need to say to you, but, well, I don't, this is odd. Do I think you should wait till next month? Probably not. But I don't feel like I, I was really mostly here to listen, to listen to this, to listen to sort of the whole meeting and just sort of, I don't want to tell you what to say about the town center plan. And I think that we've had some, you know, we had some offline, there's been some casual conversations. Dave Brower brought this idea to my attention in the first place, but I don't think it's for me to tell Planning Commission how to, how to sort of staff that or figure out what you want to do. So, I'd rather just, I'd rather just listen.
Well, then, I'm going to set this topic aside till next month when we can ask the Rowan manager to kind of discuss what work the Rowan's interested in having the Planning Commission do. So, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is old business, discussion of the draft, salad ordinance.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I assumed that you weren't going to actually talk about this, that you weren't really asking. The thing of it is, is like, I as an individual council member can't instruct the Planning Commission what to do, right? Council as a whole can and would really would like to give this project to Planning Commission, but we don't want to do it in a top-down manner. So, that's why I guess the idea would be that Planning Commission would sort of have an opportunity first to talk about how you would see this and then council would take our lead from that rather than asking Planning Commission to do something that you may not have the resources to do. So, I guess, I guess that's why I'm not, I'm not, I don't, it's not for, it's not appropriate for me as an individual council member to say, oh yeah, this is what you should do. And I don't really think that the Borough Manager will do that either, so.
Okay. All right, then. Then, let's spend a few minutes on this, if that's okay. Everyone's confused as to what this is. As you know, from previous Planning Commission meetings, I don't know, a year and a half ago or more, when we were looking at revisions to the zoning code for the 5A district and, which resulted in some modifications for plan development on large lots and building sizes and the whole package of changes for the 5A district. One of the things the Planning Commission discussed was, in a very brief way, was what should the goals for Station Circle be as downtown evolves? There are a lot of changes occurring downtown. Station Circle is kind of a central place, kind of always hoped for having a town square in Norbert, but what might happen to Station Circle? And as part of our process, it was either Jim or Jim and Dave together or others created what was sort of a list of principles, if I recall correctly, or priorities, a kind of amounted to a brief vision statement for how we should think about Station Circle as changes occur all around it, which are somewhere in the records of our meetings and the notes that we've passed on to council. Priorities about circulation, priorities about how a space should be used, and I think really the articulation of the idea that Station Circle should be thought of as, one day, as a town square, Norbert, a town square that we don't really officially have. And we kind of left it at that because we were really focusing on zoning changes. But as Councilmember Pananopoulos said, I guess there have been a couple of casual conversations about picking that effort up again, about maybe looking again now that we are seeing changes downtown as to whether or not this is the right time to think about what the future of Station Circle could be, or more importantly, what could a town square in Norbert be? And several people, several people in council, the Borough Manager have asked us, have asked if the Planning Commission would consider taking on the leadership of some sort of process in the community where we could help our neighbors, our community imagine what the future of that place might be so that as changes occurred, that we would have something of a roadmap for, to offer to the community, to offer to council as to how to look at how Station Circle could become a town square as buildings and properties around it change. So, the question is, what would that entail for the Planning Commission to lead such an effort like that? What would we have to do? What resources would we need? What timeframes could we work with it? I think it's a very intriguing question. I've asked a couple of you to think about it already, to think about what the components of that might be. And I've asked if some of you might be willing to carry it forward if we actually were asked to do that. So, I think what, it sounds like what the council member and our staff are interested in hearing is whether or not the Planning Commission feels it has the capacity to take on this role, community desire and capacity. I think that, I think that what this could involve is some kind of public process, some kind of public meetings, some kind of way of collecting information from the public, engaging with the public in some sort of exchange of ideas, some kind of workshop or charrette-type mode, kind of synthesis of ideas and a kind of delivery of that to council. It's a very, you know, a lot of communities, this role is played by a planning department, it's played by a planning commission, it's played by, you know, a nonprofit civic group, like an architecture group. But for us, it would be a very interesting opportunity to consider. So, a few of us have talked about what form that might take and what the challenges might be. I guess the first question to ask the other members of the commission is, do you see this as a role that would be a valuable role, a valuable service to our community, a valuable role for the Planning Commission to take on? We don't tend to do this kind of planning. We tend to do with land development applications and zoning revisions and things like that. So, this is sort of the other part of the planning brain, right? Forward planning, the vision planning, the community consensus building. So, I guess the first question is, is this something that you, as individual planning commissioners, feel like we should be thinking about doing? Is this something that you have the interest in taking on? That's the first. And then, I think we should talk a little bit about how that might work and what the challenges might be for us to do that. But the first question is, do you think it's something we should be thinking about?
Short answer?
Well, I'll go around and let everyone comment. You can go first, Jen, since you got to the mark.
Short answer is that it is absolutely something that the Planning Commission should organize. We shouldn't be the, we shouldn't do it. We should organize a process. I think, excuse me, a number of us have experienced in planning, in physical planning of campuses or large institutional projects and have an intuition about how that process should work. Having done it well and having done it badly myself, I know what some of the pitfalls are. And I absolutely think that physical planning is something that although we don't routinely do it as Norbert's Planning Commission, we are certainly capable of managing a process around physical planning. And I think it's a golden opportunity with all the physical changes occurring in the downtown to have a, dare I say, a blueprint, I shouldn't have said that, for the overall development of a civic space to knit the downtown together. This is the moment to do it.
I'll just go around the table and ask everyone. Dave, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, there's no, there's no question that we should be involved in this since it's, it's a intensely important area that needs to be looked at carefully. I'll pick up on, Jim just said the word blueprint and I think that really, it brings to a head what I've been thinking as I was listening to Todd and then Jim, and that is that the process certainly has to be an inclusive process that involves the kind of community input that charrettes were designed to foster. The question in my mind now is if the Planning Commission is going to undertake the organization of this charrette, there needs to be a clear, a clear direction, I think, from council on what the work product is meant to be and what's going to happen to that work product once it's done. I mean, I also know from personal experience on quite a number of charrettes, there's an enormous amount of preparation work that goes into it and organizing it, then implementing it and coming up with the final work product. I guess, for me, I need to know if we're going to undertake this, that this final work product isn't just going to end up on a bookshelf somewhere, that there's some strategy that council is thinking about concurrently with our efforts to take this and do something with it. But assuming that that's the case, then absolutely we should do it. I think we have the, I think we have the experience and the people power and the permission to undertake it. The other piece of this is that since in my experience, we were always paid professionals to do it, at some point, it's got to get transferred over to a professional firm that's being hired to implement the design or to take the conclusions of the charrette and move it along. And that too, I think, needs to be thought through by council so that, again, it just doesn't peter out, but that somebody who is being paid to undertake this will be the person that the ball is passed to.
Adam, what are your thoughts?
I think that's well said. I mean, to recap, the, that we have the capability to manage that kind of a process, that, you know, that's within the realm of what we can do within our mission, that the square itself, Station Circle, is an opportunity for a civic space, that there's, you know, potential activity, development activity going on, contiguous to it right now, under construction, for example, across the street. So, it's a good opportunity to try to get ahead of changes to create a better civic realm and then ultimately that, because it is a pretty big investment in time and resources and in consensus building, that you want to have a sense of how the Borough Council would proceed with the recommendations for implementation and including, you know, a plan for the professional implementation of whatever comes. So, I think that was well put.
Jen?
I'm on board with all. And I wholly support the idea of, I hesitate to say rethinking Town Center because that presupposes we've already thought about it, but being new to the, being new to the Planning Commission, I think it's a great opportunity to really get groups together toward the common goal of enhancements to Station Circle. I also see that with increasing density, the, you know, positive energy of a really fully revitalized Town Center has great potential for a thriving community. I would add that as Planning Commission members, we can also keep an eye on, you know, comprehensive plan ideas, points towards sustainability, green space, and really maybe even take into consideration, you know, updating infrastructure, clean energy, you know, those kinds of goals that, you know, other groups are looking to achieve.
Okay. Jen, what are your thoughts?
I'm in agreement. I think it's appropriate for us to do it. I know there's a good wish list of things that a lot of us think, wish were different about Station Circle. I think we're all familiar with the Temple students, the classes of Temple students who presented their own re-envisionings. There's a lot of material to work with, there's a lot of past visioning to work with. I think we're in a good position to do it.
Okay. Heidi, haven't forgotten you, would you like to share your thoughts about this?
I agree with what everybody has said. I think that it would be really important to get professionals on board with it pretty quickly. I do also fear that we could do a lot of, come up with a lot of ideas and then it will end up not going anywhere. I mean, we have been, we've hashed out these ideas for Station Circle many times over the years, and I think it would behoove council to start interviewing professionals who would actually do the design work and that the Planning Commission should absolutely be involved with helping guide the work. I think that the SEPTA station should be considered at the same time. I know it's not in our realm to dictate to SEPTA what should be done with the station, but you can't not consider it because it's such an important element in that, in the view of Station Circle. So, I think there's a lot of elements to it, but I think we need professional, to hire professionals. And I, and I'm assuming that there are grants out there to help us with that because, you know, Samantha has mentioned those in the, them in the past. I know that Bill Martin has always talked about grants that might be available through the county. I don't know if, Chloe, if you know of any grants that might be available, or through the state. But I'm absolutely, you know, fascinated with it and I would like to be involved.
Okay. So, I guess I'm hearing support for exploring the idea. I think one of the key things that's come out of all your comments is wanting an understanding or assurance that council has thoughts about how these ideas could be leveraged into change in the future, that this is an exercise that they see as a practical nature to it, that can actually impact some decisions they're going to make or resources that we have. It's not just like a class studio, but it's actually an applied, applied project. I sense that's a strong concern or interest that everyone has, trying to understand from council and staff what the through lines are to kind of moving forward with their vision. I think the second thing that might be worth talking about for a minute or two is differing views of the breakdown between what volunteer Planning Commission do versus, can do versus a... do versus, can do versus a, um, versus, um, design professionals. I heard Heidi just now suggest that having design professionals, um, working on this sooner rather than later would be a good idea. Um, I guess it would be good to hear from others, particularly those who've had hands-on experience in processes like this, what you think the limits of our abilities are, where you feel, uh, and when you feel, uh, the borough should be looking at having, uh, designer planning professionals engaged in, in this process. We had to report back to council, like here's, here's what we, we like this idea, here's the role we think we can play, but here's where we think you really seriously need to consider the involvement of design professionals. Uh, what other thoughts are there? Heidi, Heidi expressed a few. Heidi, I'll get back to you to answer this again, but curious what we all think about that you've actually worked on.
Well, I, I, I agree with Heidi. I mean, you know, and I guess, uh, that's not surprising coming from an architect saying that, yeah, it's a good idea to hire an architect. Uh, you know, but it's, it's, uh, it's been my experience that the sooner the paid professional gets involved, the better. Uh, it's interesting because in my experience, my office's experience, often the grant money that's been available has been to fund the sherret to get the, the professional, uh, on board at the very beginning and not to, to get the, the paid professional done, uh, on board, you know, once, once the sherret has been done. Um, you know, I, you know, could, could we conceivably organize and do a sherret with the, with the, uh, uh, experience, uh, of the, the, the volunteer help and people on, on the Planning Commission? I think we probably could. Is it the best way to do it? It probably isn't. Uh, if, if the, if either the grant money or the funding for having that kind of a, uh, a paid office do it, which, which is easily a five-figure number, if that's not available, then I'd say this is important enough for us to get our heads together and figure out how to do it. But it's, it's, it's optimal to have the, the, the professional office running the show and having all of us as volunteer help, uh, you know, jumping in and, and working on it with them.
Um, I should, um, I should add that, um, I'm not sure what the timeframe for obtaining grants would be. Um, it was described to me that, I hoped is that this could be like a, a six-month process, which I think would fall, occur too quickly for, you know, a grant cycle, a typical, like a state grant or something like that, which usually has, has longer lead time. So I think like, while it would obviously be desirable to have something like this led by a design, uh, or have heavy involvement from a design professional, I'll say that design professional because that kind of included a designer. Um, I guess the more nuanced question is, what do you think we can accomplish as a volunteer Planning Commission versus what could be accomplished with design, a design professional's assistance and what would be essential to look at from a design professional?
Well, I, I think we could accomplish the sherret if we needed to, if there was, if that was not a possibility, either because of the, of the schedule problems of coming up with the money to pay for, uh, or, uh, or any other reason, we're, I think we're certainly capable of doing it. I don't think we're capable of taking it beyond the sherret. I mean, the sherret, you know, in, in the parlance of, of the profession, really doesn't get beyond the pre-schematic design level. I think once you get past that level, you really do need an office involved working on the project. But, um, you know, if, if it was absolutely positively necessary, and I agree that, that we don't want to delay this, we should move it along. If it, if it's really necessary, you know, we could do it. We could do the sherret anyway. We could organize it, we can, you know, put together the work products, uh, necessary to have one, you know, and we could work with the borough staff to make it happen. But as I said a moment ago, uh, the preparation of sherret is a fair amount of work. And frankly, I don't feel like doing it if it's not going to go anywhere, or that we have a pretty good indication that there's a commitment for it to go somewhere.
Jim, I skipped over you. You, you, Jim Cornell, you spoke first last time. What's your take on the question of what our capacity is, what our role could be versus a design professional, uh, particularly given the timeframe in which we're being asked to look at this?
Well, I believe that if there is enthusiasm on the part of the Borough Council, who are in the end going to have to give the nod to the dispersment of any funds, um, and are going to, uh, be largely responsible for energizing what will turn out to be a fairly significant effort in the, in the downtown and very visible. Uh, if that's the case, if there is that, if there is that enthusiasm at the outset, then I would agree that bringing a, bringing a paid professional on board early is the optimum, uh, track to follow. If there is a lack of, of excitement, then I think, then I think one of the roles the Planning Commission could play would be in generating that excitement by doing some of the preliminary, what Dave keeps calling a sherret, but let's call it a, let's call it an eliciting of public interest. Um, we could do that part. I myself am very enthusiastic about this project and have been for many, many years, having schlepped through that miserable Station Circle more times than I care to remember. Um, and I think others probably share that. And a little bit of, um, a, a little bit of tweaking of the, you know, of the public's interest in this, in this important part of town would yield, uh, pretty, pretty big results pretty quickly. And that part we could do. And then later, when there is a, a groundswell of interest, uh, and the, and the council can sense that, uh, and sense that it is a, should be a priority of the, of the, of the town to pursue it, um, then you can bring in a, then you can bring, bring in the paid, paid professional, uh, and then the, then the, the project takes off like a rocket. That's my feeling about it. So we do need, we do need a little bit of a, a puff of smoke from, from Borough Council in order to gauge what the enthusiasm is. Uh, Michelle, could you want to speak to that? I know you're still there.
Wait, if it's okay.
I'm here.
Michelle, do you mind?
I still can't get my video to work.
Jim, I wanted to clarify one thing with you and then ask the other Planning Commission members, then perhaps we could ask, uh, there are two council members, I think, on the, on the meeting, we could ask each of them if they would like to respond. Uh, Jim, could you clarify that, that creation of the excitement, uh, does that, does that mean having that kind of public workshop or does that happen later after?
No, I think you have to have a public workshop.
Yeah, I, I, I.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I want to keep this brisk.
All right.
Okay, Jim.
But it's more, it's more of, it's, it's, it's more of a, it's more of a, uh, uh, process of eliciting, uh, interest from the public. And it may turn out, it may be partly griping about what's there now. Some, some people are very happy to park in that radio parking lot and go in and, and buy their, buy their liquor at the liquor store, but that's about all it's good for. And I think a lot of people recognize that.
Okay. Um, I just want to see where you spot the line there, so I think that helps. Um, just to keep things moving along, Adam, you, I know you've talked to me a bit about your knowledge of these processes. What do you, where do you think the breakdown is between what the Planning Commission can accomplish and where a public, where a design professional is really needed, especially given the timeframes and in terms of which we're being asked to think about this?
So I mean, just realistically, right? Design fees are typically 10% or more of construction cost. So, you know, that's the, that's the scope of the investment in a professional firm to, to carry out a landscape or urban design plan for construction.
But to, we're not only looking through construction.
Well, what I'm, what I'm leading up to is that at this stage, you can definitely economize by using the volunteer Narbor Planning Commission to help run a sherret. If there's a strong interest in bringing the professional on from the very early point, you know, that is going to require obviously putting the professional on retainer, having some kind of an agreement, but you may not want to spend your money on having their shop do all of the prep work and, you know, that they could perhaps come to the sherret. Uh, I think, I think a sherret adds a lot of value in cataloging the community's ideas, values, and coming up with concepts that people can, can vet and get behind personally. And, you know, hopefully that goes somewhere, uh, but it certainly can't hurt.
Um, Jen, can you speak from experience as to what you would see the breakdown be, be between what a, what our volunteer commission can do and where a design professional's experience would be necessary? If you can't, that's okay, but I know you're practicing design professional, so I thought I'd ask.
Yeah, and it's, and it's interesting. I don't, I don't want to go on about this, but, you know, the first, I heard Dave Brower say once, I don't know if what I'm saying was it, what was actually said or what, what I was thinking in my own head, because you think creatively originally as an architect and, and I feel like my initial response, I share the enthusiasm that Jim speaks about, and my initial response is, can we just, let's look at the plan, let's see what we've got to work with, but stepping away from it and thinking about how could other services really help move this project along toward an outcome that we want to see rather than just an exercise in planning. We really want to see change, right? So how can we make this happen in a way that, you know, the people that we ask to help us with this project are actually going to deliver and it's actually something that we can, uh, it's feasible? Um, from a practical point of view, fundraising, grant writing, I don't have any real steps toward success at this point. There's, there are too many, um, too many unknowns.
Okay, Jim, do you have thoughts about this? I think I'm a design professional, but you're a community professional.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be, I'd be enthusiastic about contributing ideas to the project. I'm not, if you're right, a not designer, I'd be able to help with that. I'd be, I'd be able to help with the mechanics of the exercise, soliciting opinion, polls, surveys, that kind of thing, advertising for attendance. I'm all, I'm all in.
Heidi, what are your thoughts? Again, the question I'm trying to get at is, you recommended having a design professional come in early on, um, I'm not sure why, whether there's resources for that or not, the borough would like this to be a, a rather quick process. What do you think is in our capability and where do you think the essential value of a design professional would be?
Well, I actually, um, I mean, you don't just hire a design professional, you have to interview several. And I'm, I'm thinking, I mean, going back to the idea that maybe you invite, you find several candidates by various means and then you could get together with them either in the sherret process or just by way of a roundtable meeting with them all over drawings that we've already created some drawings and have a lot of background to share and just see, find some, find a group that may be a good fit, have them come up with proposals. You put out an RFP that, um, different pre-selected candidates could respond to, could help you narrow it down and you could basically let them help guide the process of both hiring them and doing the project.
Dave, you're.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's important to clarify what happens in this first stage, whether you want to call it a sherret or something else. The, the value of the, of the professional involvement is not to come, to come up with design ideas at this stage, but it's to organize the, the public, uh, input into it. And, and that's, that's the, that's the real time expenditure and the, the value of the, the firm at that stage is to be the organizer of that. I think it's important to emphasize that, you know, if, if we're really going to get the community buy-in, that it's not, it's not coming up with a, with, with some design ideas that we then present at the outset and looking for some validation. It's, it's the other way around. It's, it's to get that, that, uh, inclusion in the public and, and this discussion of whether it's gripes about the existing Station Circle or it's visioning for what, you know, people would like to see. And then the design professional, having organized that effort, would then take the, the product of that process and, and run with it and start to develop designer ideas.
Chloe, can you, um, talk to us about any observations you have about what the right way for the Planning Commission to be involved in this would be? And given the Planning, the Montgomery County Planning Commission's relationship with the borough, what resources you could bring to bear on this process? You being the MCPC.
Yeah. Uh, sure, thanks. Um, just a couple, very briefly about grants. Our county grant program is actually for implementation, so for construction, uh, so someone mentioned that. So we have a grant program that might be useful further down the line, but not for this part of the process. Uh, in terms of planning and design, we, MCPC have supported projects of this size and scale before in terms of assisting with public outreach, usually in cooperation with some kind of a steering committee, which the Planning Commission could have that function, creating, um, you know, design posters and maps and things, um, to be used in public outreach. And we do have two landscape architects on our staff who work on this type of projects and, and, and one additional urban designer. Um, they tend to be busy, but they also are excited about new projects and that's a part of what they do. So I think there is the potential that we, our office in working with the Planning Commission could take this fairly far down the road. There may be, um, a benefit to engaging a firm that could take it all the way through engineering, um, rabbit, which we would not be able to do. You'd have to do the, the design and then take it to another firm that would do the engineering for construction. Uh, if you engage a design firm that also has engineers on staff that sometimes is sluther, it's not necessary, as you probably all know. Um, and one of the things I wanted to mention is that there, the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission does have planning grants, TCBI planning grants, and that application cycle is open now and awards would be, you would know if you got the money or not by July 1st. So I don't know if that fits with your timeline, and I'm not sure this is the perfect project for that grant program, but it, it does fit within their criteria and it could be eligible. Um, so that's another thing to consider.
If we wanted to seek help from MCPC, is that something the borough staff could talk with you about in terms of repurposing your efforts under the current contract you have?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and yeah, that would be probably, we'd drop the saldo, like, I'll move on to.
Like a what?
Uh, like, I don't know. We, we, we're really, the way our contracts are set up are one project at a time, so.
Yeah.
Um, if, if there's a desire for the borough to shift to a different project, we can certainly discuss that and that would probably be fine.
Okay.
This is the heart of Montgomery County. I'm sure we could come up with something, I'm just kidding.
Am I foolishly even thinking that we're close to the end of the saldo process?
I mean, we're, we're getting there.
Let me, um.
Oh, only two more years.
Uh, not that long.
Let me ask, uh, the council member in Panama, the council member Winston, if either of you, uh, would care to say? if either of you would care to say anything about this, about what you've heard or your own ideas about this. I'll just offer an opportunity for either or both of you to share your thoughts.
I heard a lot of enthusiasm and some, and some interesting concerns raised that I think are really important to, for council to consider. I mean, obviously, this is a process wherein we would not expect, nobody would expect planning commission to render professional services. So clearly, right, there would be professionals involved in developing anything beyond sort of concepts and public buy-in, and I guess visioning, for lack of a better word. You know, clearly, we would need to engage professionals to take it to the next step through design, drawings, engineering, et cetera. I think that, Jim, Cornwall really had a great way of putting this a few minutes ago, that a role that planning commission, if it's interested, if there are members that are interested and willing to do this, could play, would be in sort of bringing, sort of giving some, giving some loft to this, you know, like getting it off the ground, inspiring the community to see that this space could be different, that our town center has the possibility to be different. And take it, take a critical eye to what's there and think about what could be. Many times, if you're looking for funding, or if you're needing to persuade elected officials to spend money or to look for funding, one of the most important things is to have community buy-in. Grants are stronger if they're grounded in our comprehensive plan, and if they are grounded in a demonstrated community process to the outcome. That makes for a stronger thing. And so that would be, I think, an invaluable role for planning commission to play if it was, was interested. And I definitely heard that there is some interest, but there's also some disagreement about what stage a design professional should be involved in. So I would love for you to think about that some more, and maybe council can have a discussion about this. And I don't know if there's going to be time at our next meeting. It's not up to me. I don't set the agenda. I, I would welcome that. But, you know, I mean, I see some real possibility and some potential here. I also hear a little frustration, like, we don't want to do this, and then it doesn't go anywhere, and I get that. But I also know that in order to make something happen, it takes fitting a lot of pieces together, and it takes money. So, but the first piece to get there really is to come up with a process that brings our community in, right, to this visioning and gets community buy-in. I think that it's, I would take your lead on whether or not planning commission wants to be asked to do that, because if not, without a doubt, there's no shortage of professional planners out there that, that would love to talk to us about, about doing that. My feeling is that we have a wealth of experience here on planning commission, and we don't tap into it for this sort of proactive public space planning. And I think that the, the decades of thought that the people here in this room have already put into our town and our town center is something that you can't really replicate by bringing in a professional at the beginning. There's, there's going to be a lot of getting up to speed. And it may seem some of the obvious flaws that exist in station circle, but I doubt they've given as much thought to the way that our community uses our public spaces as all of you have. So I, I think that you would bring something really priceless to that planning process if you were willing to do it.
Thank you.
I think it's a safe assumption, Michelle, that we are willing to do it.
Councilmember Winston, do you have any thoughts about this? I haven't heard everyone.
Not especially. I, I did put in the chat another grant program that we just found out about that's being pursued, that I'm sure that we're going to pursue, that is also another no-match grant program, and it allows design fees, not just implementation fees. So that's, Samantha Bryant is, the borough manager is now, you know, looking at, you know, possibilities of us applying to that. So there are other options.
Okay. I guess I would ask, Michelle, what do you imagine happening next? I mean, we could come to the next planning, excuse me, to the next council meeting and provide a little summary of what we've discussed, have a conversation with council, but what would be helpful?
Sure. Yeah, well, I mean, I, I don't set the agenda for the meeting, so we have to see what President Bush has got, if he's got enough, you know, if Fred's got enough time to, to do it at our next meeting. But if so, yeah, I think that it would be great for council to have a discussion about whether we want to, want to basically task the planning commission with this, with this, and figure out exactly how, who we're going to delegate, how we're going to make a decision about how to frame this, as Dave said earlier. So we're putting, you know, giving, setting some parameters around this, so it's clear what kind of deliverable we're talking about, what timeframe we're talking about, what the responsibilities are. And, and by the same token, I think it's really, it would be a great idea for, if we were to move forward with this, for whoever was going to participate to think about whether there are, notwithstanding the idea of a design professional, whether there are other professional capacities that would be needed even at an early stage, to sort of think through maybe hard limits that could, that might exist around planning, hard limits and things like access, ownership rights with the station, with SEPTA, traffic flow, parking, those kind of things that might, that might sort of set boundaries around what the visioning process could be. Think about what, what would be needed as, as a foundation. But yeah, I think it's a great conversation for council to have, hopefully at the next meeting. And yeah, if anybody from planning commission wants to, to offer themselves to be representative to summarize this conversation, I think that would be really valuable, too.
All right, thank you.
Keep us posted.
I'd like to ask if anyone here would like to help with being kind of a point person or with, with council and the staff on this going forward? I don't know that it's anything that I necessarily have to do as chair, if there's someone else or several of you who would like to sort of take the lead and kind of help and manage this conversation with, with council and staff?
Sure.
I'd be interested.
Anyone else? So don't get a volunteer?
Tim Cornwall, I don't know if you.
Yeah, I heard.
You heard Tim, okay.
I'm happy to stay involved as well. I mean, I've never, I have no experience in dialogue with council, so obviously, we'd need a lot of assistance in understanding the process.
Okay. Well, I think, I think that's a good core of people. I mean, I think any of us can be involved to any extent we want, but ultimately, we'll need someone that can kind of stay in tune with the staff and with council and help, help navigate this. So if among you three, we can figure that out, that would, that would be true.
Just to clarify, their involvement is to sort of liaison between council and planning commission, but the conversations will continue here among ourselves as commissioners?
Well, I think we might task, we might have to task people to do work in between meetings and then bring it back to our meetings to discuss. Kind of depends on what we hear from council, I think. So we'll probably have to have a little working group. Someone's to talk with how a working group can work.
Yeah, and the working group will be more than the three liaisons to council. It will be all of us, no? Am I.
If we all want to sit as a working group, that's fine with me.
Okay.
So maybe that's something we can task them to kind of figure out is how to involve everyone productively. I mean, might it mean that we have to have extra meetings?
Yeah, no, no, we, I thought we established working group on email.
Pardon me?
We established working group on email, the email.
On this topic?
Yeah.
Not, I mean, I've been talking to Jim and, and Dave, but I think we wanted to bring it here tonight to get everyone involved and find out. So I would, what I guess what I'd say is, we're going to have to move more quickly than we can move if we only meet every once in a top, a month, once a month to talk about. That means that we either have to have new meeting, more meetings, or find a way for smaller groups to work out things that's appropriate. And I don't, I don't have the answer to that yet.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I'm not interested in excluding anybody, but anybody who wants to be involved has to be able to participate when, you know, when needed to move it along. So there might be more meetings of some sort or another, I don't know. Maybe we can have special meetings in between, or smaller groups can have special meetings, something like that.
I understand. I just wasn't sure that, about how it was being structured.
Yeah. Well, I think right now, what our next step would be, would be to, you know, summarize these conversations. And if we are invited to attend the council meeting in two weeks, week and a half, and talk with council about our impressions and get some guidance about how council would like to proceed.
The council meeting is a week from tomorrow, is that correct?
I would have it as the third Thursday, is that right? Someone.
Yes, it is the 17th. It's the 17th, so the Thursday, yeah, a week from Thursday.
A Thursday, okay.
They moved the meetings to Thursdays. They moved the meetings to Thursday.
Oh, wow, that's, talk about radical change.
Okay. It is 8:30, and we absolutely have to talk about zoning changes, Mike. There's a lot to talk about, but we do have the saldo on our agenda, too. So Chloe, I'm wondering if you can update us about where things stand? And is there anything really essential that you would need to hear from us this month about, or can we simply submit our comments by email?
Yeah, I think we can do that in 10 minutes. How about that?
Okay.
Okay. So I circulated prior to this meeting our revised draft of what was the planning processing review, and then significantly revised draft of the design section. So there's a lot in there that was not there previously. There were quite a lot of changes. Okay, planning processing review is mostly just changes that may discuss small things, this and that. Design section had some more significant overhaul. As always, please send me comments, questions, and inputs, or we can have a phone call or, you know, just any one of you at another time. But I wanted to answer a question that a couple of you, a couple of you asked me about. Let me see if I can just share this table here. The headings are repeated because it was a page breaker, but this is to address an issue that we discussed previously, that in the zoning ordinance, there are minimum planting strips and sidewalk width for different zoning districts. This is what it already says in the zoning ordinance. Sidewalk widths and planting strips by zoning district. In addition, there is a table in the zoning ordinance that refers to existing conditions that, you know, that you're required to meet existing conditions. And so those sort of conflict, and we tried to address that here as well as address another issue that came up, which was that the road type also should have something to do with sidewalk width. So the text around this table says that you take your property, you look at the zoning district, and you look at how your street is classified, and you have to do the greater of what is required. So if the zoning district only requires a minimum sidewalk width of four feet, but you're on an urban collector, you have to put in a six-foot sidewalk in front of your property. So that is what this table is. And a related issue that a couple of you asked about is requiring a sidewalk along an alley or driveway. And that says only driveways that serve multifamily or non-residential development. And that, that is just in the case of the main entrance to a property being a driveway and having some pedestrian structure there. I don't know if you want to require that. A lot of communities use the saldo as sort of to require it by default and then allow people to ask for a waiver if they say, well, look, I have this other nice pedestrian entrance. That's a really great way for people to be able to walk in and out of the property. I don't need to put a sidewalk in my driveway, and you can say, okay, sure, or if you want to tackle that in some other way. So I just wanted to explain this, what we were going for here and what this is saying.
Could you, could you, I think it's possible to kind of name on one hand what the arterials and urban collectors are?
Yes.
Could you name those? It's a little easier to parse this if you know what you're actually talking about.
Arterial is just Montgomery Avenue, and urban collector is just Tavertford and Winwood.
How would you classify Norbert Avenue?
Local word. And that's based on the road classifications in the conference plan. And they align with what's used by Lord Marion.
So I, I have to be honest, I wasn't, I'm not totally sure how this, how this is going to be applied. And obviously, the Montgomery Avenue is already built out, so talking about it in the context of subdivision, I realize there could be sub-subdivision, but.
Sub-division or land development?
Land development, I know. So I thought, first of all, that, I know that they would just be illustrative, but cross-sections would be very appropriate for the document.
Yeah.
To, to sort of visualize what the implications of these things are and various cross-sections. And then, now that you mentioned the arterial, you know, I'm not sure that six-foot is the right number, for example, for depending on what the future furniture condition of Montgomery Avenue is. I mean, six-foot is a residential, semi-residential sidewalk width. It's not a very commodious, martial sidewalk, so. We had a whole discussion at the beginning of the meeting about re-envisioning Montgomery Avenue, so.
Yeah, maybe this is something that just gets updated as that process. Like, if there's ever actually a lane diet there and it goes down to three lanes, you'd probably want to see the curb bumped out into the street and wider sidewalks and planting strips, but.
Well, that's, that's one option, but you also, most sidewalks are dedicated from the property anyway. At least, at least in this town, a lot of them are demoted on the lots themselves. So, but I think it's just about the standard for what the furniture condition is. So I'm just, I think that personally for me, I wanted to visualize what this was going to be like. And then these are, these are pretty, pretty minimal. And I realize that a lot of the sidewalks currently are pretty minimal, and there's not that many new streets to build, but, you know, two front, a two-foot tree lawn isn't really big enough to support the tree, which becomes mature. You know, it'll, it'll quickly need more space than that, so. Is that really the right number for going forward? I don't have a strong opinion, but I just try, it just seemed to me that it was like, it does represent a lot of what's out there in Norbert, but that's not the same as ideal, so.
Right. I guess that's the thing to try to balance.
Chloe?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Jim Cornwall, how would, how would six-foot sidewalks be implemented on Montgomery Avenue? Right now, there's a, I'm going to say it's a three, three and a half foot sidewalk, which is, which is peppered with utility poles and other obstructions, making it impossible to wheel a stroller down or a shopping cart. So would you, would you expect re-developers of properties along Montgomery Avenue to build a section of six-foot sidewalk with the goal of ultimately having a continuous six-foot sidewalk after many years? Is that how that would be?
Yeah, that's how that would be implemented, and they'd be required to build a tapered connection to the existing sidewalk on neighboring property.
That has been happening, that a couple of properties that have undergone land use have made, have implemented a wider planting strip and, I believe, a six-foot sidewalk, the Royal Cafe.
Cafe, yeah, they have a very nice planting strip.
Yeah, yeah, and also the Green Drop also did that. When they redeveloped their property to a, you know, a drop-off, they implemented a planting strip and a wider sidewalk. Their planting strip is rocks, but it is a planting strip. And it also might be notable that our side of Montgomery has the wires overhead, so we're never really going to plant any very large trees as long as there are wires overhead.
Yeah, well, that's what I, as this discussion, I think, what other entities have more to say about this than we do? You know, whether it's utilities or Lord Marion Township or Penn Dot, I don't know if it's a state road or not, but it's not, okay. But I, I'm just wondering, what other variables are going to. But I'm just wondering what other variables are going to have greater impact?
Right, well, and that applies also in thinking about whether you want to require even a two-foot planting strip in existing locations where there's none throughout the borough, where the curb and the sidewalk are adjacent to each other. Whether, you know, what kind of utility impacts and impacts on the appearance of the street's gate? Or whether you want to make that wider and put street trees there.
Yeah, I think this is the challenge. Typically, though, if you're looking for like new street design, you would have much more generous specification than this. If you're talking about trying to fit into the existing streets in Norbert, then yeah, it's pretty tight. The, in terms of, just real quick on Montgomery Avenue, though, as an example of trying to gradually push this towards a more better design, the Royal Cafe, the aerial photo or the street photo looks more like the sidewalk is 12 to 15 feet now, and it's about three or four or five feet up the verge. And they, they're doing like a bio-swell type of approach because, you know, you can't put a big canopy tree under the wires, but you can certainly do some natural landscaping. So it's too bad the restaurant, of course, is closed, but that's an example of a retrofit from going from like a three or four-foot sidewalk to now, I think it's got to be like 12 or 14. And that's a, you know, so between the 10, 12, 14-foot sidewalk and the four, five, six-foot verge, you know, you're starting to have a much more pedestrian-focused arterial street. And it's probably a lot less probably on private property potentially.
That's a property where there was room to do that. Montgomery Avenue is unusual because it has a wide variety of lot sizes. So Jim, what do you, Jim Spear, do you have thoughts about this, about the pedestrian realm of the verge? On any streets, really? Yeah, I guess, Jim, the question I have here is, where you tend to think about things, is did those planting strips, like a two-foot planting strip along a normal street in Norbert, does that really have value?
It is, yeah, there's usually dirt under there. When we plant with shade tree, we're often putting in sidewalk buffer so that the roots go well down first before spreading out. And that's supposed to be very effective so that, you know, the roots don't immediately push up the sidewalk. Wherever we can find those, they're arguable for planting.
Your code requires actually that new planting strips be functioned by retention and have green stormwater infrastructure, basically. So even a two-foot wide strip can have some dirt and native plants, not trees necessarily. I think that isn't really why it's not to be great for trees, but can be like a bio-swell. But I guess the question, a question for you on that is the importance of the existing character in the neighborhood streets. What impact would it have if, you know, one property in the middle of the block has this two-foot wide planting strip and four-foot wide sidewalk interior, that and the neighboring properties have their sidewalk right up to the curb? Maybe it would look great, or maybe that's a concern for you, so.
Look, I mean, there's a number of parcels that aren't at their highest and best use, right? Just up the street, there's a big surface parking lot, hardly ever has anybody parked in it, it seems like to me, right? Would I imagine that building having a little skinny sidewalk, you know, and maybe a tiny bit of... Like, there's room in that parcel to try to extend the pedestrian environment of downtown further towards Borough Hall behind the bank, in my opinion. So I don't think you need to, I think we should focus on whatever is best for the pedestrian, basically. I mean, you know, I think the point about tapering it back to the contiguous lots is the fine approach, personally. But again, it depends on what the cross-sections are. If fundamentally blow it out, you don't have that right-of-way, then have to work with what you have.
So it doesn't, it wouldn't bother you that every once in a while sidewalk might conform to new standards even though most sidewalks don't?
They already, they already change all the time. But, you know, it's always more comfortable not to be right up against the cars, right? And have a little more space for the stroller, as was said, and so on, so.
Any other concerns about that? Keep giving your answer.
Okay. And then a very, very brief question that I added, I revised this very short section about bicycle routes and bicycle lanes, and I mentioned the Lower Marion Bicycle Master Plan in here as something that should be reviewed and its recommendations to be incorporated. Is that something that Norbert Borough supports? Is that something you want to review before I mention it here, or something I should pick out?
I would say definitely yes.
Okay.
Keep that in, but that's just me.
For the record, the constantly aging open space master plan says the priority for bike connections in Norbert should be to connect to Lower Marion's bike routes. Without saying what they are, so the point is we want connectivity.
Yeah, I actually think this is, we went through this a little bit with the Windwood Road discussion. There's not a lot, it's like, I think we should reference it.
Yeah.
There's, needs to be some more planning work done to the actual... And a lot of times they draw lines on the map and then it doesn't really mean anything, you know? They haven't done anything about it, so what's going to make that real?
Okay. I'll leave a reference in there, and I agree with you that might not result in some great new bicycle infrastructure, but it can't hurt to consult the various...
No, we're going to turn a page, we're going to do Montgomery Avenue, we're going to do Windwood, it's going to be great.
Okay, thank you very much, and please...
Chloe, can we get back to page 18 for just a minute?
Yes.
That's where your grid of sidewalk and planting strip was. And where it says four-foot sidewalks on alleys and driveways.
Yes.
Okay, I have severe concerns about requiring sidewalks on alleys. I live on, I live on an alley, and it's 16, the right-of-way is 16 feet wide. It's got a cartway of 15 feet, 11 and a half inches. And if there were to be a sidewalk in a situation like that on one or, let's say, both sides of four feet, that would get the, that would get the right-of-way up to 24 feet. And that's never happening on my alleyway, and I doubt that it would have any particular value because the residents on this alley walk in the street, walk on the pavement. Just a lot of impervious cover for not much, for not much benefit, I'd say. I'd also like to make a comment about the paragraph number five about construction methods. It's a big paragraph. I have a lot of doubt that anybody knows what a lot of that means, particularly the people that actually do the construction. I would venture to bet that nobody knows what AA PennDOT concrete is. Particularly when the, from the concrete truck is backing up to the newly formed stretch of sidewalk. Nobody's going to know whether it's double-A concrete or not. So I would recommend that we get a little bit of input from Panoni on this to make sure that what is in this paragraph is consistent with actual construction practice in the real world.
But trust me, I did not write this paragraph. This came from your put enforcement officer and your engineer with an edit that was based on your previous comment, Jim.
What was that?
Adequately compacted sub-base, this was added.
That was one of many, that was one of many thoughts I had about this, and I was happy to see that.
Yeah, well, I think if you have further concerns, maybe you can discuss with Kevin.
Okay, yeah, while I'm here, hey, Jim and Chloe, thank you. This is more of an Eric issue when it comes to compaction in the site, you know, the concrete work. That's more site work when it comes to land development. But this was discussed thoroughly over numerous meetings. So I don't know if Eric is collecting receipts when it comes to pouring concrete. But again, feel free to follow up with him when it comes to the concrete types action, paragraph five in general.
Okay, I'll talk to Eric.
I think the more, the more important thing is something we've talked about a lot in other contexts, and that's enforcement. I don't think I've ever seen a sidewalk poured in Norbert that had a crushed stone sub-base. And, you know, is that really something that's going to be enforced? Or we've got a lot of language in here that effectively means nothing?
So again, this is, we're in the SADO. We're, what we're, is get the sidewalk standards in SADO to kind of match up. We're still working on the language, again, this is draft. We're working on the language that's going to make those two match and what we can enforce. Yes, have we looked at compaction? Have we looked at crushed stone base? Have we allowed materials? We're working on finding something that makes sense and can enforce.
Okay, I'll take this up with you guys offline then.
Just would like to, before we move on, in terms of Jim's comment about alley or driveway, Chloe?
Yeah.
It's an interesting point Jim makes, and it's predicated on the notion that a cartway is for cars and sidewalk is for people. Kind of functional differentiation of the cross-section, right? But we know that there are many examples of streets that are designed for shared use, which I think is what Jim is describing in practice, that street, Leantwin Lane is another one that really is a shared-use street. We certainly don't, I think if a street can be designed safely for shared use, then maybe there can be an exception that that sidewalk isn't necessary. So I think, think about, you know, when I was in planning school, we called them "buneras." Bunera, I don't know what they're called now. But it may be that for a certain class, for the alley or the private street or driveway, if there's some kind of shared use standard that could be met, then maybe that's an alternative to the wider cartway, but it's more of a safer cartway that can accommodate pedestrians and cars. That might be worth considering as a way of addressing, Jim's points well taken. We want people to walk, but there may be other ways to achieve it on these very low-volume routes than segregate it. Because as we know, the more you dedicate things to cars, the more cars will take them over, right? And go faster, you don't want that, so anyway, that's my response.
Yeah, I guess...
Just try to include accessibility in the discussion of the buner strategy.
Whatever it is, I mean, it could be just a street of a certain...
Share intention, that's a shared street, whatever the terminology is, but yeah, just accessibility part in that too.
I guess a lot of communities like to use the SADO as a stopgap where they say, we're going to require four-foot sidewalk along all driveways and alleys, and then just on a case-by-case basis have people ask for a waiver, depending on the context. And then you can say, okay, this seems okay, we grant a waiver. But I sort of have gotten the impression that Norbert doesn't like operating that way as much as a lot of places. And that's not a problem, in fact, it's probably a good thing in many situations.
You don't want to overbuild that kind of impervious infrastructure.
I don't, I can't think of an example where this would apply, so... But I, but I did think it was worth mentioning in terms of trying to understand this sort of shared pathway. Could you use like some kind of like super rumbly, like cobble-type texture just to slow the car down enough that it's shared with pedestrians? Or not that it would be desirable to cycle there, is that the idea of that type of thing? Like, is it, do you change the total? I don't know, I'm just wondering what that is.
I don't know, but I don't think, I think we could either...
Okay.
Here's your time, I don't want to, I don't want to delve into this if you don't mind, because we have so many questions we need to talk about tonight.
We've done with this, and please do get in touch with me with any further comments or suggestions.
Yeah, and Jen, if you want to explore that with Chloe, please do, what those might mean. There actually are some, there are some references to things like that elsewhere in SADO. They're just not described, but they're referred to, I think. Okay, let's try and see how much we can accomplish in terms of our zoning revisions we're working on. We have two draft ordinances that the solicitors developed based on our work and our input and our recommendations to date. And, you know, the goal has been to get all of our technical aspects of these worked out so that they can be considered by council, and I'm sure council will have a lot to say about them. But our goal is to finish our recommendations so that council can do its job in that. In reviewing the notes from the last meeting and the solicitor's notes, I boiled this down to a few points, and I guess we have to add to that in this, the unclear memory of whether we agreed on 2,000 square feet as a cottage size. That gives us a number of things to go through. I'm really going to ask if everyone can really focus so we can get through these and finish them because we're very, very close, and we've been at this now for about five months. So I think it behooves us to try to focus them. So the first, and one thing council did after its last, the last time it considered these topics, it's just for kind of administrative purposes, it asked the solicitor to develop two, council asked the solicitor to develop two ordinances, one related to accessory dwelling units and one related to infill. That's just a procedural thing that makes it easier for council to manage the decision-making. It doesn't really change the substance of the code at all. Fortunately, the two topics aren't related code-wise, and so you can have them be separate. So first, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. I think by the solicitor's reading, the code is pretty much there. I think I get the sense that council is generally pretty happy with it. I haven't had many questions from council about it. I did flag one thing that I wanted to call to your attention, and I've suggested one minor modification. And it's not a change in what we agreed to or the intent of this. It's more, I think, a code-writing fix that has to do with that small set of circumstances where an accessory dwelling unit might be on a corner of property. And rather than being behind the primary building, might be next to the primary building because of its locked configuration. This might occur once in a generation, perhaps, I don't know, but it's a very rare circumstance. And I thought the language as prepared in the proposed ordinance was not clear enough. And so I suggested a change that I think would clarify what we intend for the way that the accessory building relates to the street. The intent here is to have the accessory building, if the accessory building faces the principal street, have like if its door is not facing the principal street, to have a frontage on that side. And if the accessory dwelling faces the side street or the second, you know, the secondary street, that the frontage face that side. That's really the intent, I think, which we agree on, but I don't think the language got us there. So this clears, this language, this change is, which is margin right, is hard to clear that up. And that, secondly, that the accessory building, if it faces the primary street, should be set back slightly from the primary, the frontage of the primary building. So it shouldn't appear as another house, it should appear as an accessory building. So that's that change, and I would like to know if anyone has any concerns or objections to that change or questions?
What if it was in the third lot layer facing the secondary street? Do you not have a concern?
Concern about the...
Concern about, uh, about the accessory, the accessory dwelling facing a secondary street that might have frontage on the sec- or, you know, frontage onto the secondary street, but existing in the third lot layer.
Okay, so for second, for an accessory building in the second, that's a good catch. So we could add, we could amend that so that if the accessory building is in the second or third lot layer of a corner lot, its entrance, its entrance faces a secondary street, then it should have a frontage. That's what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good.
That's good, okay.
As always, extra eyes help. Okay. Alright, so that's the first. And, and other than that, I could not catch anything in the accessory dwelling unit ordinance as presented by the solicitor. And I think I've said it to you a couple times to look at, so.
And there is this, I, I'm not sure I'm looking at the same version of this that you are, but it's this paragraph that says, if an accessory building is on a corner lot, the side facing the principal street, secondary street or rear street. Rear street is a term that applies not to a corner lot, but rather to a through block lot. So maybe it should say, if an accessory building is on a corner lot or through block, 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 then da, 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 da. Um, and that made me think maybe we needed a definition for through, through block, block.
I didn't catch that. Can you tell me what your, where you found that?
I think it's that section you were just talking about, but I'm not. I'm only able to get a different version than I.
Yeah, so I want to make sure I can reference it on the version. The version I have is, has the date 120 in the file name?
Yes, mine has too. Okay.
Okay, good. So then this, this might be something that, uh,
Okay.
As with Jim's change that I missed. So can you refer, what is the actual section?
It's in, there's only really one section, 506 of two.
Right.
C, three, C, although I think this should actually be D.
Three C? Building requirements, accessory building is in the second lot layer and its entrance faces the principal street.
Bad to share screen? Can I do that again?
Uh, sure. Do you have any permission to do that?
Um, I do have, yeah, technical permission.
Okay, share your screen.
Okay. This paragraph. There's this whole thing, if an accessory building faces a street and is in the second lot layer, this and this. And this other thing really should, I think, be a letter D. An accessory building is on a corner lot or through block lot with sides facing, with the front facing.
Can you scoot to the top of this file? Because I have a version of this which does not appear to have that. And it's one I picked out of an email from Charlie. I thought I double checked my, um, this morning to that, to make sure I had the right one.
Okay, well, um.
So this is very interesting.
I agree, Chloe. I don't, I don't have that version either.
This came from John Walco. Uh, this, this thing that says or through block lot is something I added. So there's those, those four words, but the par- the paragraph was there.
Okay, well, I don't think that made it into his version.
The words or through block lot or the whole paragraph?
Or through block lot.
Yeah, I, no, I just added that today. Nobody's seen that until right now. That was my suggestion. So I brought this up. And then I thought we maybe needed a definition of through block lot.
Why would we add through block lot?
Well, so he, in his draft, mentioned rear street, which only applies to a through block lot. So that has frontage on one side and then frontage on some other side, but it's not a corner lot. I think the idea of this paragraph, as I understand it, is that if you got an accessory dwelling unit and it faces the other street, it should have one of these frontage types.
Yeah, I agree. Well, technically some, there are lots that are both corner and through block lots, you know?
That's true. They have three sides.
But I know what you're talking about.
Um, first of all, the draft I have for him does not have rear street in it either.
Okay, I did not add that. That was in the draft I received.
But I'm, I'm like searching the draft he sent me and I don't see it. Kevin, do you recall seeing rear street anywhere in the draft that you have?
No, I don't. My last update is from 111 actually.
Well, this is dated 120. But Todd, you said yours was dated 120 also.
Yeah.
Okay, there we go.
All right, well, let's, let's not debate that.
I think we can agree with the, what the idea is here. We can make sure the language does what it needs to later. I think it relates to what you were just saying before this, Todd, which is just that the, to ensure that if your accessory dwelling unit faces some street, that it has the appropriate frontage types that it needs to.
Okay, yeah, I think, yes.
Um, and then I was just going to add this through block lot and my attempt at a definition. Although, Jim's beer did just point out that it's possible to be both a through block lot and a corner lot, which means this definition doesn't work, but.
So we can, we can just add another provision, if an accessory building faces a through block, is on a through block lot and its entrance faces a rear street. And that will be defined because it's defined in the other part of the code. So we'll just need to make sure that's carried over into this, um, this ordinance amendment as well, right?
Rear street is defined, but there was no definition of through block lot.
Okay, well, then just say, then we'll just make it easier. We'll say if an accessory building is in a lot that, that faces a rear street or something like that. So we don't have through block lot. So that's, that's like a third condition. You have a corner block where, where it faces primary street, a corner block where it faces the side street, and a through block lot, where a lot with a rear street where it faces the rear street. We just have to make sure we cover all those conditions and it's a frontage facing whichever side the front is. Okay, I think we can fix that. Well, that's a real, uh, surprise. That there's yet another draft.
I still don't know why we have different versions of this. Sneakily sensible.
Okay, so Chloe, is there anything else on the ADU ordinance since you seem to maybe have a different draft that, uh, we better make sure we?
Um, John Walco just made a comment that in both this and in the historic overlay until ordinance, there was language relating to a sidewalk connecting the other building or buildings to the sidewalk network of the street. And then maybe that language should be uniform in both of the ordinance.
Right, so yes. Okay.
If I haven't edited that, that could be one way to do that, but.
Okay.
And that's it. So there's a, there's a primary that should be principal.
Okay, so before the next council meeting, before I write a report to council, you and John and I should make sure we're working on the same.
Um, great.
The same draft. Okay. What do they say, uh, in urban design school? You have to get it on the same page. You'll have to be on the same page.
Uh, oh, sorry. John Walco asked a, asked a question in here about whether the building coverage for the lot is going to be increased for ADUs. And I think the answer is no, only for the other thing.
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
That's right.
Great.
Speaking of which.
That's it, really good.
I'm sorry, which, which document are we discussing?
The accessory dwelling unit ordinance?
Access, the ADU ordinance.
Yeah.
I, uh, I just, you know, I understand that this is the only way that council wants to go. It's the way it has to go, but it, the notion that, uh, normally allow two units on a lot, is that? I mean.
I feel like we dated this.
Well, all right, and then the, also the, uh, the area of the building is 600 square feet. The minimum size is 800 square feet. And I think that's just going to force that to happen. If you want to get 800 square feet, you have to have a two-story structure.
Pitched roof, yeah.
I understand, but we don't want to just make it 800 square foot to be consistent.
Well, you know, I think thinking there was to minimize the building coverage somewhat. Um, not have larger buildings. I kind of feel like we could, we could reevaluate things over and over and at a certain point, if, if it's a good sense as we've come to, um, we just sort of need to kind of stick with it.
Well, yeah, I, I guess. That, I just worry about squeezing everything, uh, to where it's not. It's so restrictive, you know, so. 600 is still a pretty good size, but it's, you know, you were the one that pointed out that Los Angeles says you can't go below 1,200 square feet for the building itself. So I'm just saying, like, I just want to make sure that we don't end up with an impractical uh, structure that just is not, uh, terribly useful, you know, so.
Well, you know, we try our best to come up with a good solution, then sometimes we do get feedback when permits come in and we realize that maybe it wasn't the perfect solution. We've occasionally gone back and, and reevaluated those things. But I think, as you recall, there was a concern about whether 800 seemed to be on the upper limit of what we thought was accessible over, or, or appropriate overall. So I feel like this was the kind of way we, we came in agreement that the ground plate could be smaller. If they wanted more space, they could go up and fit within, you know, the kind of slope roof that they would be allowed to have. Which is actually the way you see most ADUs in Narberth right now. Small buildings that have peaked roofs and will lose space upstairs. Where you, we actually see them. Where they're not supposed to be. And there's some clever ones actually. Where like one slope is like that, one slope is like that and.
Was there?
No, go ahead.
And at, at one conversation along the way, there was mention of when we were discussing housing types, I do believe that tiny house came up as a potential type, which would sort of fit this, uh, you know, description of a small footprint that has a, you know, two stories, maybe two and a half, something like that. Um, is that still something that we're considering?
I believe we discussed this and this provision would permit a so-called tiny house.
Okay, but we're not calling it out as a?
No, there's no lower limit. There's no lower limit.
Okay.
So you're going to go to tiny house, you're good. And I think actually Kevin is on the line, but we even had a conversation with him about whether it was on wheels or not and how it's regulated. It's on wheels versus, it's not on wheels. And I think we were satisfied that if anyone wanted to create a tiny house, uh, this would provide a path for them to do it. But that might not be what everyone wants to do. Uh, and so, um, this provides other paths to create an accessory dwelling unit besides the tiny house. This has got a bigger setting that includes that. Um, I don't think we agreed that the only thing you should be able to do is a tiny house. But if you want to, you can. And if you want to get in on TV and put Narberth on the map, that would be even better. Because those are awesome little things that you can do on TV. But from a coding point of view, it doesn't have to be a separate type. Kevin, is there anything you'd like to add to that conversation just to bring closure to it?
No, again, as long as you just mentioned, as long as there aren't minimums, you can, you can do both under the same cottage style.
You mean the ADU, Kevin?
I'm sorry, ADU, yes, ADU.
Okay. Okay, I have a quest- quick question. I believe I heard council at a meeting say that they would like ADUs restricted to rel- housing relatives. And I believe at some meeting we acknowledged that council had made that request. And I don't see it reflected in the ordinance too. Not that I am recommending, you know, or that I would have recommended that, that, uh, we construct the ordinance like that, but I believe we acknowledged that council wanted us to.
Okay, so we did have a provision, the owner of a property where the accessory dwelling unit is located shall be a natural person who shall reside in the principal building with accessory dwelling unit on the property.
Where's the?
That is, um, for miscellaneous requirements.
For, oh.
And that is, that is not what you said, Jim. I know you said something different.
Right.
I, I had this question in the lab, maybe two meetings ago. Do they want the owner in one of the properties or the?
So I went back and listened to the tape of the council meeting. And I thought I verified. The intent here is to include what we think the direction from council was. Um, and I thought I verified.
Okay, no, no, it's okay.
Um, I, as, as you've seen several times today, I'm completely capable of making mistakes. Overlooking things or, so if that's not what council asks for, then we, council will change it.
It looks from this wording like the intent was that you not have a remote owner owning a house and an ADU.
Right.
Without living in either of them.
Right.
Okay.
Right. I, we can double check that meeting again. I think it was November meeting at council. I think, I, I think I, I'm with you, Jim. I, I felt council's, um, conversation tended towards an outcome that's more restrictive than I personally felt was appropriate, but at a certain point, when council requests changes to things, they, those changes are made. If this isn't accurate, then we should change it to what, uh, council really wanted. So I think all that means is, um, we should check that tape one more time and make sure that's accurate.
I thought he said they can change it if they want to, no, it couldn't.
They could, yeah.
They can just flag it for them?
Yeah, you can flag it. Someone's going to have to check.
They, they'll read it.
Someone's going to have to check.
They should read.
Okay, anything else on this ordinance? Because the other one is going to take more time. Okay, so let's move on to the infill ordinance. Um, the first thing is Jim and I have done a, um, analysis over the course of several, we've been phone calling. And I have to confess, it's not 100% complete, but we're beginning to get a good idea of how many uh, properties would be affected by this ordinance. So Jim and I rehearsed today. So Jim, would you like to walk everyone through?
Okay.
What have you learned?
So we're trying to narrow down the properties that could possibly take advantage of an infill order. What, what would be the priorities for those properties? And what we were looking at, uh, the assumption we started with is that we would, we would find properties that prior to historic preservation could have torn down their whole house and subdivided and redeveloped on subdivided lots. This, that.
But can't now.
Sorry?
But cannot.
But cannot now, because they're, the fact that they have a preserved house on their property is preventing them from subdividing. So the first pass through that produced a list of about 26 properties that, that satisfied those conditions. They were big enough, they had enough frontage to subdivide. The lot size was big enough to subdivide into two or even three or four lots in some cases. Um, but can no longer do it. Uh, I mean, have, that list came out to about 26 properties of which we think maybe 10 or 12 have a realistic chance of taking advantage of the infill ordinance. Now, there's another list that is much less examined, which are people who could have torn down their house. torn down their house and subdivided into twins. That is a much longer list at this point, it's about 230 properties, and we have not, we have not really examined the development potential of those lots, so that's, that sort of remains to be explored. Overall, I think it would be, if we had the time, it would be great to examine each of these properties individual, individually, and figure out what the development potential was prior to historic preservation, by whatever measures we have, whether it be building footprint, maximized building footprint, or by maybe by floor space estimate or something like that, but the development yield on a property prior to historic preservation compared to what it would be under this proposed ordinance. We started to do that a little bit too on that first smaller list. It's much easier to work with those list of 12 to 26 properties than it is to contemplate the list of 230. That's kind of where we are, but Todd, you wanna say anything more about that?
Yeah, actually, if you don't mind, in counting those 20, I think it was 27, 26 to 27 houses, we, Jim and I actually looked at each one individually, where the house wasn't a lot. And what we actually found was a good number of them, maybe a third, between a third and a half, could still be subdivided, even under the Historic District Code. So I actually threw those out, and then of the rest, we got to about 10 or 12 that couldn't be just subdivided under the existing code, but could be subdivided under this. So that's another interesting finding, is that a lot of houses, we thought might, and that's simply because the, because there are enough lots, the lots we're looking at are of a large enough size that they, that they could, they could do that, so that's another interesting finding. So the reason we did this, of course, is because council was trying to get its arms around how much change might this actually precipitate, and I think our conclusion was there were fewer properties than we anticipated could, could take advantage of this, which was sort of an interesting finding. It led to another finding, though, which is number three on the list that I sent to you by email, which is the maximum number of buildings that a plan development might yield. What we noticed was, rather than being concerned about too many lots being able to take advantage of this, you know, the old Russian people coming in and taking advantage of this, there were a small number of lots where actually the lots are so large that this, these provisions, particularly the small infill house, the cottage type, would allow them to create far more units under the plan development provision than we had actually realized. So like, if you take some of the lots that are like 20,000, 30,000, 40,000, 50,000 square feet, by the rules we have, they could actually create quite a number of units. And that actually was another finding of kind of going property by property and looking for this. So, that's what number three is. That is a great, that is actually, in my mind, a greater concern than the fact that too many houses might infill a house. It's that just number of properties may infill a lot of houses under these rules, that would not, I mean, the notion that a house might split its lot and add another house, that's the way things have rolled in Norbert forever, it's not unusual, right? We don't like to see that happen necessarily, but it's a typical metric of development that is characterized our history. It's less, I think, characteristic now, maybe it was in the 60s, 70s, into the 80s, but less characteristic now that you see a big, huge lot developed into a lot of houses, it doesn't count that lot. So what, the language I've proposed to deal with that is, the way the, the plan development works now is, the rules say, if you want to do infill, the first thing you have to do is fill in along the street. And if you still have more development capacity, you can build behind that. You can actually have houses that don't have a frontage on the street, you can build behind that. And so what we are proposing to control the number of buildings in a planned development is to say, you can't have more primary buildings behind the front row than you have facing the street. So if you have two buildings facing the street, you can only have two behind, no matter how big your lot is. If you have three buildings facing the street, that means you have a very wide lot, you can only have three behind, no matter how big the lot is. And we saw some lots that were so big that you may be able to have 10, 10 houses behind or 12 houses behind. So that, that would kind of cut back on the notion that a plan, the plan development tool could result in more houses than, than we think is appropriate. So it still gives people the ability to, really what it does in practice is, before the Historic District Act, someone could have torn down a house and built five single-family houses, big houses on big lots, and now it says you can build five small houses on small lots and maintain more open space. So kind of, what all this does is, it doesn't really yield a lot, many more units that could have been built in the first place, but it compacts them more, this rule. So that's, that's what number three is about, and so I wanted to put that on the table for your consideration as a way to cap what could happen in a planned development at the larger, at the larger end of the spectrum. So any questions about that or comments or?
Would it be permissible to specify in there some maximum number of houses that could ever be built, or is that necessarily discriminatory? If we say, you know, as you said, a certain number along the street, and no more than the same number up to a maximum, behind them, up to a maximum of, I'll make up a number, you know, eight?
Well, I think in practice, a kind of absolute number that applies everywhere.
Rather than six, some, some number that, that gives a limit.
I think.
Even though there might conceivably be a couple of lots where, where you could, by square footage, develop more, or by the geometry of the lot, develop more.
I think instead of having an absolute number, this is a, the number that this would result in is related to the width of the lot.
Well, I was gonna say, in addition to that provision.
Well, I think, I think the biggest lot we found, and we're keeping, the one that's kind of hard to kind of think about would be three, three oh one, but the other lots, I think the most we found was you could fit, you have an existing house, you could fit two small houses next to it, and then potentially three behind, and that would be a 50,000 square foot lot. So I'm not, you know, I'm not sure, I mean, what, the number that if you had a maximum would have to be either one or two, because I think the functional maximum is three.
Okay, all right.
And Jim, do you have any insight into that, because we looked at this together?
Yeah, well, so there were some other ideas for, you know, how to limit the number of structures on a lot, this one. And one of the ones you said earlier was to just make sure that these have, these structures have street frontage period, you know, which would essentially bring us back to through lots and side lots, you know, no rear lot stuff, but. I don't know, you know, if we had the time to examine, like, the real impact of these individually, I think it would be a great idea, you know, to, to play these out, to show like, this is the maximum that we, this lot could have, like, this row here and the same number in the rear. And again, what is the maximum development potential that we're introducing to this lot, whether it's, whether it's building coverage or floor space? And then compare that to the prehistoric preservation development potential. That's really where I feel like.
You know, do you think it would be safer, instead of the rule I proposed, to simply say, even in a planned development, all, all primary buildings must, must face a street? Then, on the street, when a property was only one street, then you could pretty much figure out how many houses are, or if a property is a three-block street, you can face either the one side or the other side, but you're always facing a street, you're not putting anything in the middle, you know, which would naturally, then your frontage would be the limit to the number of units.
So we're not going to use anymore, is that?
Right. Would that be a better way to do that until, would that be fine with me?
I don't know what to say, because I don't think we have the time to, if they do those analyses that I would really like to have, but I, I'm not sure.
Okay, well.
Of the 26?
Of the larger lots, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, are you talking about taking each one, looking at what's there, multiplying by lot layers, if there's, you know, and then comparing that to?
Right, what was the, what was the previous subdivision potential?
I might be missing something, but it sounds, I mean, if you gave me that map and I did that, I think, I don't think it would be, it would take that long to do. It's just like multiply, add, and.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I could be missing something, maybe, I don't know, we could have a phone call. I have, because I have, you know, like Photoshop, and I could make it fun and graphic, and we could.
The real challenge is not, you can't, when you look at the tools we have, you can't always tell where a house is on a lot.
I see, okay, it's not that clear.
I don't think it's that, I'm gonna try and frame it one more way, because I'm not, I'm not sure it's that complicated to have to do that. The, the planned development, as it is proposed now, is a tool that allows you to place primary buildings, more than one primary building on a lot, without subdividing it. And the metric that's used is, you, you need to have a certain square footage for each type of primary building, which is the minimum lot size for that building, so it's 6,000 for a detached house in 3B and 3C, or 10,500 for a detached house in 3A. And, yeah, if you were to tear the house down and look at a lot, it's simple arithmetic. You divide 40,000 square feet by 10,500, and you get, throw the remainder out, you get three. And you also have the half, half enough frontage to do it as well. That, that's basically how you figure out what a lot can do. What the, what the planned development does, though, is it allows you to put the building anywhere on a lot, right, which means, which means you don't have to have, you just have to have the area, you don't have to have the frontage. And so, when Jim and I looked at it, we realized that could allow far too many primary buildings on certain lots. So the question is, how do you pull that back? One idea which, which I had was simply to allow houses on the frontage and then one house behind, but if that seems too much, I mean, it is, it is completely unreasonable to say you can only have as many houses as you have room for, for a frontage, quite a few. And if you're lucky enough to have a three-block lot, you have two frontages, and if you're not lucky enough to have a three-block lot, you just have one frontage, and that, that seems to me, since that's the way we control the number of units now, that seems quite fine, and it's like, actually not too different. What the planned development does is it allows you to not have to have the internal setbacks between the buildings, because your, your historic house might not be located optimally, right? So it allows you to not, so you get that same flexibility, but you don't get the inadvertent extra number of units.
So would that idea require that you build your first two minutes at the street frontage, and then an equal number somewhere?
No, no, I guess what I'm saying, Jim, is if we required each primary building to have a frontage, you can never build a primary building behind another one.
Oh, okay, I mean, I was referring to your original.
That was my original idea, but I'm saying, your idea is another one to consider, and I think it would be fine.
That was also your, it was also your idea, but.
If I understand, are you just capping the number of primary buildings based on the frontage of the lot?
Yep, in a planned development.
Right, as it, well, as it could, because the idea being that you could have subdivided to the, to the minimum that the code allows, to create blank lots.
Right.
And so rather than do that, you're putting your lots in a bank, and you can put the buildings on the lot as they fit.
Right.
Which, it seems, it's, there's a nexus with dealing with the fact that you're no longer allowing them to house a lot. So, it seems, there's a lot, it's very reasonable in that sense, to me.
It also sounds more dynamic.
That's good.
You know, like more possibility for configuration.
Well, what it really does is it helps to break problems where the original house that you can no longer tear down is not optimally sited for subdivision, so you can find.
It will not be optimal, I think, the exercise that I did.
Yeah.
So that it's very rare that the house ends up sitting where you want it to sit.
Jim and Heidi still on? Do you have any thoughts, Jim and Heidi? I can't, I've not been looking at the screen, so I don't know. So what we're kind of aiming at is a way of controlling the number of units a planned development can have, is to require all the units in a planned development to have a street frontage. You can't stack a ton of units in the back of your lot. I think there was an oversight when we wrote that section.
I think that's a wise control, Todd.
Which one?
I'm sorry, yeah.
What are we talking about?
Requiring, requiring the frontage limitation.
Yeah, I agree.
But not requiring the house to be built to the frontage, right? Because that was the whole idea, is that it may, you may not have enough space to get a set of units, right?
Well.
I had that same question, is what if the house, existing houses that go right exactly in the center of the lot, and even with provisions here, you can't quite wedge it in next there at the front and on the frontage lines, but maybe they should still be allowed to build the one additional unit that they would otherwise have gotten from.
Right, let's say they have a really deep lot, they could, they could tuck the second house back from the street.
So you're saying, that's Dave's idea, which is to have a cap, which you're saying the cap should.
Well, that's what I thought I said, that it seemed very reasonable to me, take your frontages that you could have subdivided, that's your unit cap for the lot, you cannot exceed that unit cap.
Okay.
The cap would be what you could have gotten before the Historic District was enacted.
Right.
I mean, we can modify that in some ways.
Okay. So Jim, that means maybe you could put one behind, or depending on your violent. That's also reasonable to me. I just think there needs to be a control.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
That is a good idea.
It's not, it's basically, what it's doing is it's holding the density to what it was before, you know?
I also agree.
Okay.
I have a question. So I have a question about that. So, are we working with the existing minimum lot sizes with this?
So there's two factors here, Heidi, one is the width, the lot width, and the other is the lot size, right? And so we're already saying, in terms of lot size, you use the new lot sizes, right?
Okay, so that wasn't clear, okay.
But we're saying, in terms of the, in terms of the width, we're saying use the old width, figure out how many you could have yielded, and if you need to put one in the back, you can do that. and if you need to put one in the back, you can do that. But not the new width, because the, uh, new width, the minimum width for the new cottage type is, there is no minimum width, right? You can make the lot as narrow as you'd like to, so that wouldn't really work. So you have to use the, the old width. The idea is like, if you could have done this in the past, before preservation, the, the historic district was passed, then, and you can't do it now, you've lost something, right? So we should try and see if you can get that back. So that's why the, that's why the original frontage is, is the important measurement in that regard, but the new lot sizes allow you to do the smaller house, you know, the other thing we've learned is that our current code drives you to building bigger houses, because the way the code is written, and so this allows you to, to build, you know, actually pushes you to build smaller houses by using the new metrics, the new lot size and new maximum sizes for the different housing types. So it's a combination of, so I think that's a really good approach. So thank you. Okay, so, um.
Just if, if, if you get into trouble about trying to figure out what the pre amended zoning code lot sizes were, maybe just pick a minimum size, your minimum frontage.
It's not hard, because it's right there on the table.
I was gonna say, if we have to figure out how to phrase it, but if the standards are the same as they always were, they would just run into trouble when they tried to demolish the buildings, they could still look at.
I'm just, I'm just thinking if the code gets edited in some way and you lose track of
Right.
the old code, right, so you, you set it at a minimum, this many feet equals a lot, you know, it's all the same, so.
Okay. Okay. So there's, there's, um, two other issues than the cottage size, and I want to really try and get through this, so we can give this to council. Uh, we, in our last meeting, agreed that, um, there may be situations, since there may be situations where a particular property might just have a very de minimis difference between the amount of lottery they needed, and uh, in, in order to, um, take advantage of the planned development, you know, less than, look at a 10,000 square foot lot, like less than 100 feet or something like that, that we would build in a, a kind of, and, and I think the notes refer to a fudge factor, or just some kind of de minimis amount by which if you weren't quite needing the amount of square footage you needed, that you could nevertheless have your project approved. Um, and that really is a, you know, that's related to trying to come up with an infill solution for 146 Marion Avenue. And so the solicitor rejected that idea and said that if we want to, if we want to, um, change the amount of square footage required for things, we just need to change the amount of square footage required for, um, any particular lot size, so like if we have 3,000 square foot for a small house, for a cottage, we need to reduce that somewhat, or if we have 1,800 square feet for a twin, we just need to reduce that somewhat, so. Uh, thinking through how this would play out throughout the borough, there's, there's really, there's really three options, one is for infill development, we could reduce the amount of square footage needed for a detached house, which is now 6,000 feet in 3B, 3C, and 10,500 square feet in 3A. It, it's interesting question, because I think we've all acknowledged those lot sizes are unusually big compared to what lot sizes are in urban. Uh, the second thing we could do is, we could reduce the size of a cottage lot from 3,000 to something lower, or we could reduce the size of a twin lot, which is now proposed to be 1,800 square feet to something like, like 17,500. So I guess to achieve that goal, which we discussed trying to achieve last time, we have to come up with another path. So the question I have is, do you have a preference as to how we reach that goal? Um, is it, would you prefer to lower the amount of square footage for a detached house, a cottage, or a twin, the infill situation? Think there's arguments to be made for any of them, from a policy point of view?
Sorry, does it matter, or why can't you just set them all 5% lower, or?
It doesn't matter. No, that's, I'm just asking, I mean, before we write a number, and I just, I mean, if, if, if it would be better to reduce them all a little bit.
I'm sorry, so, because if I understand correctly, the discussion last time was, well, well, if it's within 5%.
Not even that, like 1%.
It's not 1%, I'm, I'm making it seem a little bigger, just to, the, you know, that, that, that that would probably be acceptable, but that's not legal, not be an option.
Right.
Right, so if we were, if you were saying that the borough would be willing to lower it by, say, 1%, and if you just lowered all of them by 1%, it's the same thing.
Right.
So I, 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 I'm not sure if there's value to be had in going further than that.
Can I, can I ask a question? Um, so I, I certainly don't mind reducing the size of lots a bit, but I'm wondering, could there be a proportional reducing of the allowable square, square feet? Um, because if you, I'll continue to, again, we have the 35 foot height, and we, I don't think we've restricted that in this. The only place where we've restricted areas is in the size of a cottage. Um, I think if you're gonna have a, allow smaller lot sizes for twins, and you're gonna allow 35 foot high twins, I'm just wondering if that's something that we want.
Um, the draft is 25.
It's a 25 foot.
Oh, 25 for twins?
And then cottages, though.
Yeah.
On the smaller lots, okay.
Yeah, and then it's still 35 for detached houses. I mean, if you reduced it by one or two percent, you'd come up with ad numbers like five.
Yeah, we could. You got around enough.
Yeah, wasn't, wasn't the draft like seven, anyway?
1750. Yeah, my own feeling is, um, you know, if you reduced, so again, this only applies to the infill situations, right, not across the board throughout the borough. If you reduced the amount of square footage required for the single family house or the detached house, that's really interesting, because you're not then changing, reducing the size needed for the infill, right? You're all, you're just kind of, you're just sort of reducing the number that's attributed to the house that's already there. So you're not actually, and the house that's already there is already gonna be there. So in a way, say reducing that by 100 feet, like to 5,900 instead of 6,000, or 5,750 instead of 6,000, doesn't change what you can develop there, but if you change, if you change the, um, the amount of the lot size, say of a cottage, and that throws the ratio between a lot size and a cottage size out of whack more than. Or if you, if you reduce the lot size for a twin, then that means you're being pushed to smaller twins, so there's different dynamics at, at play here.
We're not actually subdividing a lot, though.
No, you're not, but, um, you need to have that much square footage in the planned development.
On the parcel.
You have to have that on the parcel, yeah.
Yes, but it, it is, I, I guess, I mean, I'm probably just not getting it, it's like, they're not real lot lines.
No.
It doesn't really matter where the foot is.
They just need to add up.
They just have to be a total, so it's like, you know, saying that it belongs to the, the existing house or the new house is not relevant.
Does this, this would not affect the subdivision part of this?
But they can.
Well, it would be, it's like, if you reduce the size of the, the lots required for the, the smaller twins, it's like from 1,800 to 1750, yeah, that would reduce the subdivision, right? If you had a smaller maximum lot size, that would result in a smaller twin. But again, if, if you only changed the lot size for the existing house, then the, everything else would stay the same as we.
So it's a maximum lot size?
No, minimum.
It's a minimum lot size, it's not changing the size of the house, is it?
No, it's a, wait a minute, is it, it's a minimum for the, uh, how, for the sink, for the detached house? Right? Or did it say?
Lot area, they're all minimum.
They're all minimums?
Yeah, floor area has a maximum.
Okay, so they're all minimums.
Height has a maximum, but lot area is just a minimum.
We're, we're not changing the heights of the building, the coverage of the lot as a ratio.
With design requirements or anything like that.
Right, all we're saying is that in terms of like, when it, when, when that, for 146 Marion, when they total up their square feet, they were a little short to get the unit count, was that the problem? So if you reduce the lot size requirement, they, that, you know, that just shows that, like, if, if the lots are too big, you know, and we don't have a big enough lot, you can't build, is all, so. Uh, if I understand correctly, then the, the rest of it is just about the spacing rules and.
Right. So the question is, what lot size do we reduce? You proposed all of them a little bit.
Because that basically gets to the whole point of, of, you know, it, it was close enough to be compliant for this purpose. And, and, and if these were PUDs, these kind of requirements wouldn't even exist at all, because the developer would be saying, here's my site plan, do you agree with it? Right? But we're not doing PUD, we're doing something a little different, and so you have to have enough flexibility to make it work.
Right. So would everyone, and then, I mean, that one, that first thing is to reduce each lot size requirement by small enough. Like 25 feet or something.
I'm not saying it's right, but that approximates what you were talking about last time with making it compliant, it's not close enough.
Just, would, would that, well, would that open up any more lots to development, like to be able to take advantage, like we, when we?
You'd have to peel, put together a bunch of 50 feet to get to it.
Yeah, but that, that's, you know, we, we did have a hard cutoff when we, when we gathered these eligible lots together.
But if you reduce, if you reduce the single family house, it might hit like 25 feet, then however many houses are between 5,975 and 6,000.
Yeah, I don't know how many there are.
There'd be some, if you left that at 6,000, then reduce the other ones, then no, it wouldn't change that.
But I, I thought we just went through the whole thing about, we were saying, you formerly had a lot that was blank, you could fit this many units on that lot, and that was gonna be the cap going forward, no matter what you do, right?
There are different metrics, there's the total amount of lot area, and there's the total amount of frontage.
Yes.
Both come into play.
I thought, we just said the total frontage was gonna limit the lot.
There's two metrics, there's the amount of frontage, and there's the amount of lot area.
Whichever one's smaller would limit the lot, correct?
Right.
Whichever, whichever of those two is more constraining will constrain the lot. It's not the, it's not the greater of the two, right? Because, because what we were just saying in the last exercise was, if you had a gigantic lot that's super deep.
Then there's a difference, the difference is this, is the frontage that we've just discussed is, is, is calculated on the basis of what could, what could have occurred under the prehistoric district code, like how much, the lot area is a way of regulating what you can do after. So we, we're proposing smaller lot areas, caps on different sizes of buildings. So that's why you need both to work together.
I, I guess what I'm saying is, if we make the lot the minimum lot sizes, and it's a bank of lots, because again, they're not actually subdividing the property. If you make the, the, the pseudo, if I understand this correctly, the pseudo lot size smaller, uh, the question was, well, won't I be potentially increasing the unit count? And the answer is, the unit count is always capped by the frontage prehistoric ordinance. So even if you, you see what I'm saying, well, if you made the lots each 50 feet, you're never gonna get higher density than you were in the beginning of the, of the historic ordinance, uh, the overlay, because you're saying, if the lot could only be subdivided into three or four units, then that would be the cap on the lot. That was the last, that, and that's what we just agreed on the last discussion.
Well, that was my question, the.
So, because you said that, you know, there were these large lots, and I could, I could, I could potentially put lots of units behind, and like create my own little compound village, and that wasn't what the intent was, right? Because you couldn't actually subdivide the property into all these little flag lots before, right? So we said that the, the, the property is controlled by the minimum amount that you could subdivide the property if it were a blank slate, that's the cap on the units. Now we're saying we're not, that you're not going to subdivide, so that was your cap, and then your second cap is, do you have, you know, based on your housing type, this amount of space per unit? And the only thing was that the, the, the unit that we chose, which is just a number that's round, you know, based on the king's foot a while, a few years ago, uh, was a little too big when, when we actually have an application for it, so we were saying, why don't we just reduce the lot size requirement a little bit, so that we can get uh, essentially the same number of units that you could have got on the blank slate, right, because you could have cut the, cut the property into four pieces. Is that, am I following this right, correctly? You're not, you're not gonna create more units by creating the smaller lot requirement, if you're going with this frontage metric we just talked about.
Yeah, it's, it's, I think it's a little, I think the frontage metric is meant to apply to whether you could put a house behind, you can only put a house behind, it does, you could, you could the historic district ordinance has new frontage requirements, right? It has, um, a new frontage requirement for smaller twins, it has new frontage requirement for cottages, which would apply if you wanted to create those kinds of buildings on your lot. It's possible that, because the frontage for the cottages, there's no minimum frontage, that you could, I mean, it's mostly, uh, what you would need to separate the cottages from, you know, however wide you want to make your cottage, then you have to separate them from the other buildings, because we wanted to be able, the cottage should be as small as possible and not, not be, um, not have the lots become artificial, it would become bigger because of having to have the setbacks. So anyway, the, the point is that you can use the, the new frontage rules if you're simply infilling uh, the new housing types, but if you wanna put a house, the question is, how do we, how do we control how many houses you could put in the back?
That was the frontage rule we just discussed.
Right.
But, but the frontage rule always, depending on how you write it, it's always gonna obtain, it's always gonna cap the maximum density lower. You see what I'm saying?
Well, I think you're saying, Adam, that at the beginning of this draft ordinance, before we get into any of the details, the whole thing should say, this only applies, you know, your maximum number of units is whatever you would be able to have in the underlying zoning district if your lot was vacant. And then, then the whole ordinance applies, but I think what, not everyone was on that same page, but some were talking about, well, but only.
This is very tricky.
More homes behind it. So when, when is that cap applied, is it applied to everything what the ordinance says, or just to that provision of it?
This is, this is very tricky, because it's something council didn't do many years ago. You can currently have a 15,000 square foot lot, you could tear down your house and you could have five units in a multifamily house.
Okay.
So really, if you use that metric, a 15,000 square foot lot would yield five units, because council never reduced that number. So I don't know that, so in a way, like if you really wanted to estimate, I think you'd have 60 foot, right, or 80 foot frontage for that?
But they'll be apartments, they won't be, they won't be twin houses.
They'll be a multifamily house.
Yeah, but the economic, all I'm saying is, I, I, I mean, I, I don't know if you wanna keep going down that road of, of the hypothetical, but the, 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 the multifamily structure you're describing is smaller apartments probably in a, in a, it is not a series of cottages or twins or singles, so the total taxable, ratable is, is probably greater if they're individual buildings than if they're in one structure.
Maybe, but, uh. Maybe, but you know, if you just go by the wrong number of units, that's another way of looking at it, which is a problem.
But I thought, see, I was going by the number of structures, I guess, too. So I don't know, maybe it makes it a structure, you can't put two in each single family house now, right? So.
You can put, you can put two dwelling units in a detached house.
Yeah. Sorry, detached house.
I guess what I'm saying for the purposes of determining whether you can, the reason for putting a house, a primary building behind another one that doesn't have a frontage is because you don't have room to put one because of where your house is and the width of your lot.
Yeah.
That's the only reason you would do it. So how do you determine whether or not you have room or not? Do you use the new frontage rules or the old frontage rules? And you have to use the old frontage rules because that's what gave you the ability to have two units in the first place, right? If the old frontage rules only gave you the ability to have one unit, we wouldn't be talking about having one behind. So I feel like, and then that's, that's one situation, that the house behind. The other situation is if you're simply looking at a lot now, we're trying to subdivide it according to the new rules, you would use the new, the new widths, the, the, the new width for a twin and the new width for cottage and existing width for the single family house. Because you're subdividing, you're creating a new subdivision according to the new rules. You're actually, you're actually doing the subdivision so you can use the new rules. The, the, the rule about the house behind only comes into play if you can't, if your lot's too narrow or your house is in the wrong spot or your house is too big to subdivide. That, it's a tricky difference. And I, I think the really only question is, is if we want to get to the point where we can accommodate this, which lot sizes do we reduce? Do we reduce the single family house, the twin or the cottage? And I, you know, I proposed here reducing the twin a little bit because I think that's the least, that actually gets us further in terms of what our goals are. If we reduce the single family house, it's interesting, but as Jim Spear said, that might have a more unintended consequences. I think the twin is interesting because that, that helps us make that a, you know, a smaller housing type. So I thought the twin was the best. Well, we can reduce them all a little bit across the board. I think it was the first item, the first idea. Since. Any, any other thoughts about it? I mean, do you at least agree that we should reduce one or some of them, a small amount? Which is the other way of achieving what we already agreed to do last time, but told we couldn't do it that way?
We talked about the, the twin lot was taken down to almost the minimum that it can be. I'm not sure for sure.
I think we talked about the width of the twin being taken down.
Yes, that's what I meant.
Yeah. We're not talking about changing the width. We're just talking about changing the total square footage.
That's the lot area.
Of the lot, yeah. Okay, so if I said to you, I think it's better for the twin to be 1700 feet than 1800 feet? Is there reason to object to this?
Do we, do we know how big twin lots are now? I mean, in the borough, I know we had that, those numbers and there were some small ones.
Unfortunately, I can't get to my numbers while I'm running them. Neither the owl camera.
But, but I'm pretty sure there were smaller than 1800 square foot twins. There were some as small as 1400, I think. So I certainly don't mind reducing the size of lot for a twin. I mean, when you think about that versus 3000 for a cottage, you figure two small twins equals one small cottage. I mean, I, it could be a, it could be a little bit smaller.
That really changing very much. I mean, that's why I chose it, because of the recommendation there.
I mean, I wouldn't change the cottage size necessarily.
I didn't think so either. Cottage, you mean the cottage lot size?
A lot size, yeah.
Let's agree on that and call it a big fat day.
Well, unfortunately, we have one other topic, which is the cottage size.
Let's get, let's, let's agree on this one and move on to the cottage size. Because I, for one, cannot go on much longer.
Yeah, this is, we're just talking about 50 feet here.
Yeah, all right, this is, all right.
Well, I put it here on paper. I'm not prolonging it. I'm trying to get to it because I'm losing it.
Yeah, I think 70, 50 is great.
Okay, so there's a difference of opinion here as to the size of the cottage. I mean, some of us remember that we agreed 2000 square feet. Some aren't comfortable with that or don't remember it that way. Now, the cottages, let's not get hung up on the term cottage because some might say a cottage isn't this big. Well, what we're trying to do is invent a smaller, single family housing type. If we have to call it something else, we will. But what we're really trying to do is recognize that the detached house we have now, the minimum size of 60, 6000 square feet or 10,000 square feet is, is producing or, you know, is forcing people into situations where they're building bigger houses, where we want to create a situation where there's a housing type option that is smaller than the like 3,500 square foot behemoth we see on a 6,000 square foot lot.
Very small.
What's that?
Much smaller lots than that, yeah.
Well, I mean, a new lot have that 6,000 square feet. Or, you know, we're seeing these big, big, big houses. And so what we're trying to do is say like, let's create an option for smaller. Now, this is not the only option we have. We're also proposing an option for smaller twins. And we also are proposing an option for accessory dwelling units. So there will be three different options for smaller that drive us to smaller structures than we had beforehand. I just want to keep that context clear. So the question is, is 2000 feet the right place to land for what this new smaller house is? I guess I'd like to start by making the case for it, which I think some of us already remember as being the, the number we agreed at. But the case for it is, is that 2000 square feet, you know, Jim and I did an exercise. We looked at using Zillow, different houses around the borough. And I think to see which houses we thought were very appropriate, small residential houses. It sort of came to the conclusion that the ones we liked were in a range of 1500, 2000 square feet. And I think that's fair to say. And some exceeded 2000 square feet, but not by a whole lot, like maybe 100 feet. So 2000 feet was sort of on the upper end of the range of houses. Does that bring to you, Jim, I don't want to misspeak, but I kind of feel like we went through that exercise and that's what I learned. But that was certainly the upper range of the kind of houses.
It's definitely the upper range, yeah.
There are a few bigger, but they, they seem to be outliers.
So go, you go on.
Yeah, so that was one metric. The other metric is, is that, you know, I'd have to go back and look at the permits and the land development approvals, but 2000 square feet seems to me to be much smaller as a maximum than the type of new construction we're seeing, which I think is more like 3000 plus square feet on smaller lots. And so we're really creating a housing type that is dramatically smaller than what we're seeing the market drive to. And that that is a, that is a maximum and not a minimum. So no one would build one that's bigger and potentially given the, you know, configuration of the lots that come from Big Hill Development, they might be smaller. So I felt, I mean, my own, those are my arguments as to why 2000 square feet is, is a, a good resting point. It seems to reflect the upper level of the houses we like. It's much less than what we're seeing the market push to. And so it's a strong constraint. And it's a maximum, which means, you know, it's not a minimum like our lot sizes are. So we're, it's possible we'll see circumstances where people are going to build smaller. I'm comfortable with that number. I think Jim and Dave felt we arrived at that number too. So I guess, would anyone like to speak to that number or to a different number?
Okay, can I point out that so in, in doing all these exercises in, in determining the maximum size of some of these new types of structures on one hand, and in determining the eligibility, the lots that are eligible, on the other hand, they're sort of feeding off each other in kind of a negative way. Like, you know, like we all know there's one particular lot in Narburg we hope will be the first customer for infill, you know, sort of a goal. And they're probably going to do the maximum, you know? So I, I feel that's kind of like pulling us in an unhealthy direction a little bit. And then looking at the sizes of houses that exist in Narburg today, more than half of them are 2000 square feet floor space or less. There are about, about 1300 houses in Narburg. And I believe it's over, a little over 700 of them are 2000 square feet or, or less. So a 2000 square foot house is really slightly above the average house than what we have in Narburg today.
And why is that important if we're, we're trying to aim for his houses that we like?
Yeah. Well, I want other people to have a chance to, to talk about it too. But I mean, I, you know, I, I feel like we used to have a smaller number for a cottage until we were sort of pulled toward the 2000 number. I can't exactly remember what that number was. But like the houses in a druid manner, very, you know, very small cottages, anywhere from like 800 to, I think the largest one is maybe 1500 or something like that. There definitely is a class of house that is smaller than what we're talking about that exists in Narburg today that we're not quite reaching. That, that's what I think. You know, and also in talking to people about what they consider cottage size, just people I know.
Well, I don't get hung up on the term cottage though.
Yeah.
Because that was a term described, invented to describe. I mean, the property of the guy is simply a smaller than a detached house type. Detached house type has a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. When someone has to buy a 6,000 square foot lot, that allows them to build a house and serve them like a 45 foot white house and something like that. And it just drives us to bigger houses, right? What we're trying to do is something small. You know, it's a cottage or a single family house or whatever we call it. Cottage might be a loaded term that isn't 100% reflective what we're, what we're aiming for.
I think that, you know what, I'm, I'm comfortable standing outside of the consensus for this. I mean, it seems like there probably are other, you know, enough planning commission members that will agree on 2000 square foot.
Counting votes.
No, yeah, so I mean, I don't want us to spend too much time on this. So you know, I, that's, but that's sort of the, that's sort of the argument.
Like I could protest votes safely and I'd still go home tonight.
All right, who else would like to speak? Either two or two, 2000 square feet or to a different number that seems better?
I'll speak to it. I mean, I, I think 2000 is a little on the big side. I, I think that a number more like 1800 just feels better. I, I, I just worry that people, developers especially, or see a number like 2000, they're going to build out to the 2000. And I mean, not, again, it's only a couple hundred square feet. But if the majority of houses in the range that Jim's talking about, the 600 or so are actually much less than 2000, they're more in the 1500 square foot range. It just feels like that's a naturally good size. If I just Googled images for 1800 square foot house and I got the median size of an owner occupied home was 1800 square feet in 2013. I mean, that just seems like a good size. I don't know, I don't know what, I don't remember deciding that 2000 was the right number. I mean, our house is 1500 square feet and I, I, it feels perfectly adequate. And if we're encouraging less, you know, more, you know, not diminutive, but, but more reasonably sized homes and more affordable homes, it just seems like we should restrict the size a little bit. You know, 200 square feet times 450 square feet, that's another X amount of money that someone's going to pay for that house. I'm just all for bringing it down a little bit.
Well, Adam or Jen, do you have any thoughts about this?
I mean, I am in favor of optimization. I am in favor of a smaller footprint. It's less energy, it's more efficient, which both, I guess, are, mean the same thing. So that's a little redundant, but I agree with what Heidi said, but I have the same sort of struggle with. But how significant is the 200 square feet? What, how do I quantify that in a way that's meaningful? I don't, I don't know. So I'm sort of inconclusive. 2000, I guess. Maybe it's, maybe it is significantly larger. Than 1800. I could go, I could go for 1800. But I'm not very, I don't have a very strong feeling about that.
I think the desire of home buyers is for a little bigger house. And people that are planning to raise kids when they buy a house here are thinking in terms of how thinly can one spread Legos on the floor? So the extra 200 square feet translates into a comfort factor that home buyers are looking for. And it explains why there are, there are additions, the additions to the existing stock of small houses are, are very popular. So I agree with Heidi's analysis, but I think I'm sort of inclined to think that we should give the people what they want. They use a hackneyed expression.
I, I agree completely with what Jim just well verbalized when I was thinking.
How thinly spread are your Legos, Dave?
Well, I like to pile them up.
Adam, what were you gonna say?
Yeah. I, I don't think there's a right answer. I don't, I don't think anyone should cast any value judgments on whether you're, you know, a bad person if you support the house being a little bigger or a little. know, a bad person if you support the house being a little big or a little smaller because it's just a bunch of trade offs of different, that people have different requirements. But I, I think that, I have watched several families move out of the house across the street because it just wasn't quite big enough for the kids. And, you know, and then imagine now with the pandemic, right, people were all working from home and you're compressing the, if you had people, it, you're, all I'm saying is that, uh, I think that the extra 200 square feet is not, uh, I wouldn't, I would not put negative values onto those types of things for, for people that need the house. Um, I also think that there is something to be said for trying to keep the houses in scale with the neighborhood so you don't have, uh, you know, I mean, essentially a house that is out of scale, I guess, with its neighbors. But on the other hand, I think it's fair to say that the, the community has a tremendous diversity already of housing stock, so it's not unusual on a street to have sometimes extremely large houses, uh, near more modest homes. And that's kind of charming in its own way as well. So part of it is just about the execution, whether the developer special, you know, stands out because it's new and not quite of the same palette. And I think over 50 years of time, it'll probably even out more. So I, I, I don't think that it's wrong to say that you could cap it at smaller or, or keep it larger. Uh, and developers may well pursue the larger house, um, but it, there are a lot of people who, who desire that extra room, uh, for, for families.
Well, I, I have no doubt that the developer will go for the larger house, but I don't think 2,000 square feet.
It's very large.
With the design controls that we already have with the port based code, a goal will lead to a, to a form that's so objectionable or, or is objectionable at all. You know, so I'm comfortable with the 2,000. I mean, if I had my druthers, you know, if I was God, I'd say 1,800 square feet. But I agree with Jim, what Jim Cornwall said before, I don't think adding the extra 200 square feet is going to make any difference effectively.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. So I guess what I'm, what I'm hearing is that there, there's a number of us who are quite comfortable with 2,000 square feet. Some of us who would like to see it smaller, but maybe a little bit, but a 1,800 square feet. And some of us who, for whom the, the resolution of this isn't, one end or the other isn't so critical, but there's something of an acknowledgement that people, people are interested in, in having space. So, um, I guess that's sort of what our report has to be, and it's a split, there's a diversity of opinion here. Um, I, I don't like to reason from anecdote, but I can spread my own anecdotes about families that can't quite live in that 1,800 square foot house. I know a number of them. Um, maybe they couldn't live in a 2,000 square foot house either, but I, I guess what I stand on is that 2,000 square feet is not too far off from the kind of typical, it's really, you know, close to the typical size of a Narbor house. It is not, and it is two thirds of the size of the houses that we're seeing. So I think it may not be perfect, but it's a big stack. It's not out of scale. I mean, that, so without anecdotally telling about people's stories about the market, I mean, I just think from my point of view, that makes me comfortable. So I think that's why the report is council. Yeah, variety of opinions, but, um, I guess more of us have the sense that it's probably okay if we continue that. Okay, I want to thank you all for your persistence tonight. Um, just, I'd like to say one last thing. Um, aside from the fact that I really valued all the conversation, but I have, the council president has asked me to kind of help walk council through all these changes in the rationale for them at the next council meeting, um, in a week, in 10 days or so. So I'll probably write that in a letter before the meeting and I'll, as I typically have done, I will circulate that letter to you all. If you look at it, so you can all make sure you have your eyes on it and call out things that you feel are not representative or reflective of what we've discussed or just inaccurate, um, in order to make mistakes. So expect that letter in several days. And I'd like to offer you all a chance to look at it and comment on it before I send it to council to make sure you feel it accurately reflects where we are on it, so. Are there any, Jim?
Just a question about the ATU ordinance, that, you know, we have, there come some competing drafts, so we don't know which one is real. Could we, once you sort that out, which one is real, could you board us that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good, a good point.
What a real.
All right. Uh, oh, I'm sorry. The last item of business is public comment. I do see a couple of members of the public who are still with us tonight. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make a comment on any matters before the commission? It is on Zoom tonight, just raise your hand or just hop in. I see nobody trying to make a comment, uh, so.
I think those are all council members, right?
I want to make an apology to one of the anonymous people watching who contacted me and asked for the visual link and I didn't see it until too late and I do apologize for that. I know you've been on the phone, so I hope that's been out of it. Um, all right, is it motion to adjourn?
Move.
Jim second, and all in favor of adjournment. Vote early and often on this one. Okay, thank you all.